Okay, thank you. Please be seated. Welcome to the 14th meeting of municipal council this session. It's August 26th, our last meeting of the summer months, so we'll see ya. Got some exciting things happening today, so we'll get through those. We've got some items to debate and who knows, maybe we'll even be done for people to enjoy some of the summer sunshine out there. I'm going to start with a land acknowledgement. We acknowledge today that we are gathered on the traditional lands of the Anishinaabe, Haudenosaunee, Leni-Pewak and Atawandran peoples. We honour and respect the history, languages and culture of the diverse indigenous people who call this territory home. We acknowledge all of the treaties that are specific to this area: the two-row Wampe- Bell Treaty of the Haudenosaunee Confederacy Silver Covenant Chain, the Beaver Hunting Grounds Treaty of the Haudenosaunee-Nanfan Treaty of 1701, the McKee Treaty of 1790, the London Township Treaty of 1796, the Huron Track Treaty of 1827 with the Anishinaabe, and the Dish with One Spoon Covenant Wampe-ome of the Anishinaabe and Haudenosaunee. The three indigenous nations that are neighbours to London are the Chipewas of the Thames First Nation, Oneida Nation of the Thames, and the Muncy Delaware Nation, who all continue to live as sovereign nations with individual and unique languages, cultures and customs. The City of London is also committed to making every effort to providing alternate formats and communication supports for meetings upon request. To make a request specific to this meeting, please contact councilagenda@london.ca or 5196612489 extension 2425. And next, I will introduce our O Canada performer. Ricky Chi is a Toronto-based saxophonist, now based in London, Ontario, where he is completing his final year of music education at Western University. With a versatile style that spans jazz, R&B, salsa and pop, Ricky has built a reputation as a dynamic performer on stage and in the studio. As a member of the Forest City London Music Award-winning band Juice Joint, Ricky has performed at major events including Sunfest, Lighting of the Lights and the Toronto Beaches International Jazz Festival. Ricky has also performed at the International Trombone Festival as part of the City of Music Concert Series that wraps up this Thursday from 7 to 10 p.m. Please rise and join me in welcoming Ricky, who will now perform the National Anthem for us. Okay, thank you. Please be seated. Welcome to the 14th meeting of municipal council this session. It's August 26th, our last meeting of the summer months, so we'll see ya. Got some exciting things happening today, so we'll get through those. We've got some items to debate and who knows, maybe we'll even be done for people to enjoy some of the summer sunshine out there. I'm going to start with a land acknowledgement. We acknowledge today that we are gathered on the traditional lands of the Anishinaabe, Haudenosaunee, Leni-Pewak and Atawandran peoples. We honour and respect the history, languages and culture of the diverse indigenous people who call this territory home. We acknowledge all of the treaties that are specific to this area: the two-row Wampe- Bell Treaty of the Haudenosaunee Confederacy Silver Covenant Chain, the Beaver Hunting Grounds Treaty of the Haudenosaunee-Nanfan Treaty of 1701, the McKee Treaty of 1790, the London Township Treaty of 1796, the Huron Track Treaty of 1827 with the Anishinaabe, and the Dish with One Spoon Covenant Wampe-ome of the Anishinaabe and Haudenosaunee. The three indigenous nations that are neighbours to London are the Chipewas of the Thames First Nation, Oneida Nation of the Thames, and the Muncy Delaware Nation, who all continue to live as sovereign nations with individual and unique languages, cultures and customs. The City of London is also committed to making every effort to providing alternate formats and communication supports for meetings upon request. To make a request specific to this meeting, please contact councilagenda@london.ca or 5196612489 extension 2425. And next, I will introduce our O Canada performer. Ricky Chi is a Toronto-based saxophonist, now based in London, Ontario, where he is completing his final year of music education at Western University. With a versatile style that spans jazz, R&B, salsa and pop, Ricky has built a reputation as a dynamic performer on stage and in the studio. As a member of the Forest City London Music Award-winning band Juice Joint, Ricky has performed at major events including Sunfest, Lighting of the Lights and the Toronto Beaches International Jazz Festival. Ricky has also performed at the International Trombone Festival as part of the City of Music Concert Series that wraps up this Thursday from 7 to 10 p.m. Please rise and join me in welcoming Ricky, who will now perform the National Anthem for us. Okay, next we're on to disclosures of pecuniary interest, so I'm going to look to colleagues to make any disclosures they'd like to make. Councillor Van Meerebergen.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to disclose a pecuniary interest on the 12th report of the Community and Protective Services Committee on today's agenda number nine. From the committee report, it's 2.9, and that is the standard form agreement for approval
Okay, thank you. Please be seated. Welcome to the 14th meeting of Municipal Council this session. It's August 26th, our last meeting of the summer months. So we'll see ya. Got some exciting things happening today, so we'll get through those. We've got some items to debate and who knows? Maybe we'll even be done for people to enjoy some of the summer sunshine out there. I'm gonna start with a land acknowledgement. We acknowledge today that we are gathered on the traditional lands of the Anishinaabe, Haudenosaunee, Lenin-Pewonton Peoples. We honor and respect the history, languages, and culture of the diverse Indigenous people who call this territory home. We acknowledge all of the treaties that are specific to this area. The Two-Roe Wampum Belt Treaty of the Haudenosaunee Confederacy, Silver Covenant Chain, the Beaver Hunting Grounds Treaty of the Haudenosaunee-Nanfan Treaty of 1701, the McKee Treaty of 1790, the London Township Treaty of 1796, the Huron Track Treaty of 1827 with the Anishinaabe, and the Dish with One Spoon Covenant Wampum of the Anishinaabe and Haudenosaunee. The three Indigenous nations that are neighbors to London are the Chipewas of the Thames First Nation, Oneida Nation of the Thames, and the Muncie Delaware Nation, who all continue to live as sovereign nations with individual and unique languages, cultures, and customs. The City of London is also committed to making every effort to providing alternate formats and communication supports for meetings upon request. To make a request specific to this meeting, please contact councilagenda@london.ca or 519-661-2489, extension 2425. And next, I will introduce our O'Canada performer. Ricky Chi is a Toronto-based saxophonist, now based in London, Ontario, where he is completing his final year of music education at Western University. With a versatile style that spans jazz, R&B, salsa, and pop, Ricky has built a reputation as a dynamic performer onstage and in the studio. As a member of the Forest City London Music Award-winning band Juice Joint, Ricky has performed at major events including Sunfest, Lighting of the Lights, and the Toronto Beaches International Jazz Festival. Ricky has also performed at the International Trombone Festival as part of the City of Music Concert Series that wraps up this Thursday from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. Please rise and join me in welcoming Ricky, who will now perform the National Anthem for us. Okay, next we're on to disclosures of pecuniary interest, so I'm gonna look to colleagues to make any disclosures they'd like to make. Councillor Van Meerebrink.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to disclose a pecuniary interest on the 12th report of the Community and Protective Services Committee. On today's agenda number nine, from the committee report, it's 2.9, and that is the standard form agreement for approval of infrastructure grant application and conditional approval to enter into childcare and early years funding agreement. Relates to Bill Number 314. I'm declaring this as my wife operates her own childcare facility.
Okay, thank you, councillor. We'll have the committee chair note that for that report. Any other disclosures? Okay, seeing none, then we are on to recognitions. I am going to move to the podium to do two significant recognitions today. All right, okay. So this is always an exciting time of the year because we have a couple of annual things that we do. And the first is recognition and awarding of the Queen Elizabeth Scholarships. There are two Queen Elizabeth Scholarships in the amount of $2,000 each that are granted by the City of London each year for admission to any college or university and the two students, for the two students with the highest scholistic achievement in our city. And we have one of them here today. So let me just read out information about the individual who's unable to join us because they're actually at their orientation week at the University of Toronto. So Aaron Go from AB Lucas Secondary School achieved an average of 99.5%. Aaron will be tending the University of Toronto, as I just mentioned. Favorite subjects at school were math, chemistry, biology, and physics. Has a dream for the future of being an engineer and an entrepreneur. Hobbies include exercising and running. And lastly, have been awarded the University of Toronto's President's Scholar of Excellence as well. Unfortunately, couldn't be here today, as I said, it's at orientation week, but maybe just in case they're watching the video, join me in giving Aaron a round of congratulations. Our other recipient, though, is here. And Daniel Brunt is an HB Beale Secondary School student who achieved also an average of 99.50%. Daniel will be attending the University of Toronto with membership at Victoria College studying literature. Favorite hobbies include English and creative writing. Also hope to enter higher academia one day to be a professor and/or author. Hobbies include rock climbing, writing, learning about urban development. Lastly, was named a finalist in the University of Toronto's For Ride National Scholarship and received the C. David Naylor University Scholarship. And I have, actually have, I get to actually hand out the cheque for this? So Daniel, if you wanna join us up at the front, that would be excellent. Do you wanna say a few words?
Sure.
Sure, yeah, come on up.
Thank you to the city and the mayor and whatever other mysterious figures handed the scholarship out. I'm very appreciative and it'll be put to good use as school supplies or textbooks or Mr. Noodle packages.
Great, and I think you have some family members here. So first off, let's congratulate Daniel. And then we can pose for a better photo if you wanna come a little closer, that's fine. Here, let's stand in front of here. Oh, and I got you a certificate too, so we'll give you this. It's not quite as exciting as the scholarship, but it's a nice keepsake. All right, so that was our first recognitions, and that's always exciting to do. And this next one is always a great opportunity for us to celebrate organizations in our city as well as contributions from an amazing Ontario corporation. So I'm very pleased today at this city council meeting to acknowledge the Ontario Lottery and Gaming Corporation, or OLG, as it's usually called, for the continued investment in London, Ontario, and its important partnership with the city through the municipal contribution agreement. In 1999, the city entered into a municipal contribution agreement with OLG under this agreement. OLG provides an annual share of the gaming revenues generated by Gateway Casinos London to the City of London. These funds are then earmarked for projects that positively impact residents from all corners of our vibrant community. From April 1st, 2024 until March 31st, 2025, we received over $5 million from OLG through the revenue generated at Gateway Casino London. This revenue has played a crucial role in supporting several essential community initiatives, including funding not-for-profit organizations through the City of London's Community Grants Program. Specifically, $45,000 was allocated to Growing Chefs Ontario to fund the Growing Chefs Community Program, which encourages community members to cultivate a connection with local food systems, participate in activities to increase food literacy, cooking skills, promote long-lasting healthy food choices in partnership with schools, neighborhood centers, and community program providers in locations across the city. Today, we're honored to be joined by representatives from Growing Chefs Ontario, an organization that has greatly benefited from the funds provided through this partnership with OLG. They have played a pivotal role in our community's well-being and we're grateful to recognize their outstanding contributions today. The remaining funds from that period through the municipal contribution agreement were used for a range of projects, including replacement of an existing boardwalk over a waterway in Lambeth Centennial Park, promoting safer, more sustainable connections and maintaining linkages to an area in the community center, park, and recreational pathway. This project also provides benefit from a climate change and adaptation perspective, including ecological restoration to protect and enhance the local habitat. Various major upgrades at some city parks, including the replacement of the spray pad at Rontree Park, replacement of the artificial turf at Citywide Sports Field, repairing of the spring bank pump house, upgrading the fieldhouse at Silverwoods Park, replacing the washroom at North London Athletics Field, building a new fieldhouse at Riverbend Park, and upgrading an electrical supports at Victoria Park. Also supported, the purchase of 14 hybrid vehicles for the city's corporate fleet, replace the lighting in seven arenas and one major sports field with energy-efficient options, installation of a building automation system and heat pumps at EROC and EV charging stations at AJ Tyler, and continued community support for organizations in our city. The Boys and Girls Club got operating funding to sustain seniors programming, children and youth recreational, social, and nutrition programs, educational leadership and initiatives. The London Melissus Heritage Museum operating funding to support Fanshop Pioneer Village, delivering programs and events and education activities and exhibitions, and preserve its collection of 33 original and replica buildings and more than 40,000 artifacts. In total, the city has received $102.7 million in non-tax gaming revenue for hosting a gaming facility in London since the inception of the agreement in 1999. These revenues are the cornerstone of support for local programs and essential infrastructure, making sustainable and substantial tangible differences in the lives of the people of London, Ontario. I'd also like to recognize Gateway Casinos as a key employer in the Old East Village community. Currently, the casino employs 247 people, but this number will increase by approximately 100 once the $50 million renovations are completed in 2026. Thank you for your continued partnership and investments in London, OLG. I'd now like to invite and introduce Kathleen Devine, the Senior Municipal Relations Manager at OLG, who will be providing some remarks and clearly has a giant cheque. So we'll do that too, but come up and make some remarks. You make my scholarship cheque look very tiny, but sure, we'll hide that.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm happy to be back here. Thank you, Mayor, and council members and city staff for inviting OLG back every year. We're always thrilled to come back into the city and celebrate this community recognition program. That's the OLG terminology for this event, where on an annual basis, we celebrate and acknowledge all the great works that are done by the city with this money from the municipal contribution agreement. So I'm today joined by my colleagues Karen and Kritika, and of course, the great folks from Gateway Casinos, Darcy and Rob Mitchell. Thank you for being here with us today. We literally couldn't do it without you. So as you mentioned, for 26 years, the casino has been operating here in this fine city of London, and the city has received just over $102 million with that funding. And it's really a privilege for me to be able to see every year where this money is allocated to and the benefit to the community and the people of London. Earlier today, we arrived a little early and met with Tanvi from the city, and we traveled over to the AJ Tyler Operations Centre, as you do on a Tuesday morning, and had a look at the new charging stations and the 20, you know, the row of the Bank of 20, and met with Drew there and a few other members. And it's incredible, right? And it's a great start to this fleet, so it was fun to be there this morning. And then we traveled a long way to the Lambeth Centennial Park, which I probably don't have to tell you, but I've never been there before. And it's an incredible park with the arena and the library. But we traveled down with Linda to the new sort of boardwalk bridge. And what a space with, you know, the whole regeneration of the plants and the native trees. So it's always great for us to be able to, we see the numbers on spreadsheets, but to be able to come here and actually have someone from the city take us out and see the positive impact. So with that said, you know, we're thrilled to be here. OLG has been doing this now for 50 years. It's our birthday this year, since that first lottery draw in 1975. And we're just thrilled to be able to do this and see the amazing work that's done in this city. So with that said, I travel with cheques. And on behalf of OLG, we are thrilled to present you with this cheque representing last fiscal's MCA dollars in the amount of $5,071,061.
We'll do some photos in a sec.
Yeah, great.
We'll do some photos in a sec with the giant cheque. But I just wanted to say thank you and express my gratitude to OLG for its ongoing commitment to our community. And the municipal contribution agreement is a testament to the positive change that can be achieved when organizations like OLG supports community well-being in our city. I also wanted to invite Andrew from Growing Chefs to come up for the photograph since you're one of the recipients of this. And so we'll do a photograph altogether. And I don't know if our friends at Gateway wanna come up too, but you're welcome to as well, whatever makes the most sense for you. And we'll do a photo together. And then if you wanna stay for the meeting, there's lots of other interesting municipal things that you didn't pay for happening too, so. All right, thanks so much. We'll get Annalisa to deposit that. And I don't know, just give you your notes back and then we'll proceed with the meeting. I threw the premier's notes off the top of the building yesterday, so I don't know if you saw that clip, but. Okay, so that concludes our recognitions. Thank you for the extended time that that takes. It's an annual thing and important item to get through given the impact it has on our community. We're on to a review of confidential matters to be considered in public. We have none, so we've got three items for council in closed session at this point in time. I'll be looking for a motion to move into closed session. Councillor Ferrera, seconded by Councillor Hopkins. Any discussion on moving into closed session? Okay, we'll open that in the system.
Councillor Stevenson votes yes.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to 0.
Okay, we'll be moving to Committee Room 5, colleagues, and for the public, we'll return. All right. Any further discussion on this matter? Okay, the chair's put it on the floor as it came through committee. We'll open that for voting.
Transfer vote, yes.
Noted, thank you. Closing the vote. Motion carries 15 to 0.
All right, back to you, Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. That leaves us to item nine. That's for the standard form agreement for approval of infrastructure grant application and conditional approval to enter into childcare and early years funding agreement as it relates to bill number 314. This was from the declaration of pecuniary interest from Counsel Van Meirbergen.
Okay, yep, then we can deal with this one separate as requested. Is there any discussion on it, though? All right, moved by the chair. We'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 14 to 0.
Okay, that means we're on to committee reports. The first report we'll deal with is Community and Protective Services Committee, so I'll turn it over to Counsel and Chair Ferreira to present that report.
Thank you, Mayor. Please report the 12th report of the Community and Protective Services Committee. We had a very productive meeting. I do have some items that have been requested to be pulled. I have item six by Counsel Stevenson. I have item nine as a conflict of interest from Counsel Van Meirbergen. Item 11 to be pulled from Counsel Palloza, and item 16 to be pulled from Counsel Cuddy. So if there's no other poll requests, I would be willing to move items one through five, items seven, eight, 10, and items 12 through 15.
Okay, so what we have is six, nine, 11, and 16 separate. Does anybody else want anything else separate? Okay, then Counsel Ferreira said he was willing to move the remaining items, which, as he mentioned, would be one through five, seven, eight, 10, and 12 through 15. So those are now on the floor, moved by the chair for any discussion or comments. So we're going to open that for voting then, since there are no comments. It'll be ready in just one moment. You'll see it pop up on your screen.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 15 to 0.
Okay, Chair, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I will put item six on the floor. That's the 2025-28 Canada-Ontario Community Housing Initiative and Ontario Priorities Housing Initiative Approval of Ontario Transfer Payment Agreement and Investment Plan as it relates to bill number 313.
Okay, and I know Counsel Stevenson had requested that to be pulled. I'll go to Counsel Stevenson now for your comments.
Thank you very much. Actually, just had a few questions through you to staff. I've sent them ahead of time. I wondered, it didn't appear that there were any funds allocated in the plan, in the investment plan, to the housing support services under the COCHE funding, or for the rent supplements, transitional operating funding through the OFI. And I just wanted to confirm that I'm reading that correctly.
Mr. Maythers.
Through your worship, yes, that is correct. Those programs are funded through other sources of federal and provincial funding.
Counsel Stevenson.
Okay, thank you very much. And another question was, it appears there's another $1 million in the homeownership loans, and I just wondered if those details would be coming to council or how they would be getting to the public.
Mr. Maythers, go ahead.
Through your worship, yes, this program includes some additional funding for homeownership. And the program has very similar criteria as the newest program that we created and council approved at the last council meeting, because we based our program on the provincial criteria, so therefore provincial criteria very much aligns with what we're bringing forward as far as our other programs. So we will be providing some communications, and I have a communications plan and strategy for ensuring that the community knows about this program moving forward, so really excited about it. And this just builds on that additional funding that council has already allowed us to use for this program moving forward.
Counsel Stevenson.
Thank you very much for that. Just a couple more questions. Regarding the community housing repairs, it looked like it was a very specific number, and I just wondered if there was a way for council to get the properties and the locations that those were planned for, if there is a predetermined plan?
Mr. Maythers, go ahead.
Through your worship, so there's not a predetermined plan at this point. It's just a funding source that we'll be able to use through an application process. So we have 63 different social housing providers that'll be able to provide applications through that program. They have their own lists of the capital repairs that they'd be looking to bring forward, so they bring the highest priority items to, as far as their applications to us, to be able to provide this funding. We don't have a list of all of their repairs, but we do have a list of the housing, those 63 housing providers, and we'd be happy to provide that to the councillor.
Counsel Stevenson.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I think that might have been circulated under a different question that we had previously. I guess my concern is that if some of these repairs are damaged units that we've been seeing, say, at 122 baseline, and we've had it with our social housing with the city, if we've got agencies placing tenants in these affordable housing units and apartments are being damaged, is that, is it possible for council to be aware of that, maybe through the Governance Working Group when we talk about that, when it comes forward in a few months?
Mr. Maythers.
Through your worship, we can look into that. I don't know whether this is being used as a source to be able to look at any kind of repairs that are specific to units, or whether it's being used more specifically for the actual building envelope, but happy to look into that and provide any feedback at a future Governance Working Group meeting.
Counsel Stevenson.
Thank you very much. Just one last question. I did notice that the plan specifically says that private sector proponents are ineligible for this funding, and I just wondered what the reasons were for that.
Mr. Maythers.
Through the chair. So the reason for that is that it's actually specifically precluded through the program guidelines that's been set out by the federal provincial government. There was some information that was missing from an asterisk that was in the report, and it just specifically said that there's other programs that CMHC provides that are geared towards those private sector developers. So they have other programs, and the purpose for this funding was to use for those social housing providers.
Counsel Stevenson.
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate the answers to those questions.
All right, any further discussion on this matter? Okay, the chair's put it on the floor as it came through committee. We'll open that for voting.
Transfer vote, yes.
Noted, thank you. Closing the vote. Motion carries 15 to 0.
All right, back to you, Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. That leaves us to item nine. That's for the standard form agreement for approval of infrastructure grant application and conditional approval to enter into childcare and early years funding agreement as it relates to bill number 314. This was from the declaration of pecuniary interest from Counsel Van Meirbergen.
Okay, yep, then we can deal with this one separate as requested. Is there any discussion on it, though? All right, moved by the chair. We'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 14 to 0 with one recusal.
Go ahead, Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. Next item is item 11, as was pulled by Counsel Palloza. That is for the proposed changes to the W12A landfill community enhancement and mitigative measures program. I'll put that on the floor.
That's on the floor. I'll go to Counsel Palloza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was considering a motion at this time. I'm going to hold off for now. I need to do some more consultation behind the scenes with staff, realizing, as the Ward 12 councillor, I recognize that this area is mine for now, right now. Next election, it will be someone else's, but these residents have waited a really long time for this report. And it's worth noting as well that going forward, these reports will come to us regularly to allow these conversations. I appreciate the changes that staff have laid out, that there's extra impacts as all of the city's garbage goes to these residents on their doorsteps when it leaves your residents' doorsteps. There's garbage that comes out, some trucks go faster, not saying they're always city trucks, but there's other people using converters in some other facilities out there that have broader community impacts. I wanted to highlight in your added communication package on 163, as we look at the right of first refusal and property value protection plans, some residents are raising questions. You'll hear from these residents again come the formal public participation meeting, both as part of the public liaison committee and as individuals, but they are really interested and want to be engaged. They've been waiting for this opportunity. There's also going to be, as late on in your report, communications going out to residents who live within two kilometers of the landfill. I thank staff for using the property boundary of the landfill, not from the middle of it or anything, to make sure that residents have engaged, and residents will be doing extra engagement as part of the PLC outside that area as well, realizing that the odors travel in the wind and can have an effect farther away, that when we have this conversation at committee, that they are doing lots of extra work for us to make sure that we have an informed decision to start this conversation that will now be regular going forward. So just really thanking staff and highlighting that, so when you start to get emails or requests to come out and hang out in South London with us, and come and smell the air, feel free to come down. And I want to thank Counsel Privile for joining these meetings. They are open to every, to the community and members of council, and they welcome anyone who wants to come and sit in at their conversations at any time. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll look for any other speakers on this matter. Seeing none, that's moved by the chair. We'll open this for voting.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 15 to 0.
Back to you, Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. That leaves us to the last item. That's item 16, for the residential rental unit licensing bylaw. It was pulled by Counsel Cuddy. I will put that on the floor.
Okay, so that's on the floor. Counsel Cuddy, something you wanted to add to this?
Thank you, your worship, and thank you for allowing me to pull this. I'd like this voted on two parts, A and B, and I'll be very, very brief. You know when you've got a really good motion, when it's supported by all members, and we had unanimous support, Chair, at committee. And I'm really grateful to staff, to Mr. Maythers, for helping me prepare this, to Ms. Pfeiffer for her first time on the job of pulling a motion together, and also to Ms. Pollitt for helping me clear the legal hurdles in this. This will empower permanent residents, residents who are looking for greater autonomy in their area, and to allow them to take a little better control of their neighborhood, areas of Ward 3 where I live, or sorry, where I'm a ward councillor, and also I might mention to Counsel Trossow in Ward 6, where we have a lot, great deal, number of students and transients living in these areas. I would say that in B part, and that's why I'm asking my colleagues to support A and vote against B, and the reason I'm asking this, your worship, is because I feel after passing this motion, that there's probably too much pressure being put onto a bylaw and to Ms. Pfeiffer and her team to regulate through a report card system, because they'd have to be constantly reviewing and reporting. And I think that's just a lot to ask for staff right now, and I think if we just went with a simple bylaw that's proposed in A, that would be sufficient, so thank you.
Okay, so the request is just to divide this as it came out of committee. We can certainly do that at the time of the vote. I'll look for other speakers on this item. Counsel Trossow.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I actually thought that A and B worked well together, as I stated at the committee. I understand what you're saying, and I'd be okay if we made it clear that the B report could be actually a longer deferral. But we do it for restaurants, and I would really like to look into how the health unit deals with that type of sign for a restaurant. People live here. In the long run, I think this is going to come back, so I don't think it's that big of an issue right now. I do appreciate the work that you've done on this. I will be supporting both parts of this, and I'd be very happy to see...
... at this point, it's just a funding source that we'll be able to use through an application process. So we have 63 different social housing providers that'll be able to provide applications through that program. They have their own lists of the capital repairs that they'd be looking to bring forward, so they bring the highest priority items to, as far as their applications to us, to be able to provide this funding. We don't have a list of all of their repairs, but we do have a list of the housing, those 63 housing providers, and we'd be happy to provide that to the councillor.
Councillor Stevenson.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. I think that might have been circulated under a different question that we had previously. I guess my concern is that if some of these repairs are damaged units that we've been seeing, say, at 122 baseline, and we've had it with our social housing with the city, if we've got agencies placing tenants in these affordable housing units and apartments are being damaged, is that, is it possible for council to be aware of that, maybe through the Governance Working Group when we talk about that, when it comes forward in a few months?
Mr. Maythers.
Through your worship, we can look into that. I don't know whether that, this is being used as a source to be able to look at any kind of repairs that are specific to units, or whether it's being used for, more specifically for the actual building envelope, but happy to look into that and provide any feedback at a future Governance Working Group meeting.
Councillor Stevenson.
Thank you very much. Just one last question. I did notice that the plan specifically says that private sector proponents are ineligible for this funding, and I just wondered what the reasons were for that.
Mr. Maythers.
Through the Chair. So the reason for that is that it's actually specifically precluded through the program guidelines that's been set out by the federal provincial government. There was some information that was missing from an asterisk that was in the report, and it just specifically said that there's other programs that CMHC provides that are geared towards those private sector developers. So they have other programs, and the purpose for this funding was to use up for those social housing providers.
Councillor Stevenson.
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate the answers to those questions.
All right, any further discussion on this matter? Okay, the Chair's put it on the floor. As it came through committee, we'll open that for voting.
Transfer vote, yes.
Noted, thank you. Closing the vote. Motion carries 15 to 0.
All right, back to you Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. That leaves us to item nine. That's for the standard form agreement for approval of infrastructure grant application and conditional approval to enter into childcare and early years funding agreement as it relates to bill number 314. This was from the Declaration of Pecuniary Interest from Councillor Mayor Bergen.
Okay, yep, then we can deal with this one separate as requested. Is there any discussion on it, though? All right, moved by the Chair. We'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 14 to 0 with one recusal.
Go ahead, Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. Next item is item 11, as was pulled by Councillor Pelosi. That is for the proposed changes to the W12A landfill, community enhancement and mitigative measures program. I'll put that on the floor.
That's on the floor. I'll go to Councillor Pelosi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was considering a motion at this time. I'm going to hold off for now. I need to do some more consultation behind the scenes with staff, realizing, as the Ward 12 councillor, I recognize that this area is mine for now, right now. Next election it will be someone else's, but these residents have waited a really long time for this report. And it's worth noting as well, that going forward, these reports will come to us regularly to allow these conversations. I appreciate the changes that staff have laid out, that there's extra impacts as all of the city's garbage goes to these residents on their doorsteps, when it leaves your residents' doorsteps. There's garbage that comes out, some trucks go faster, not saying they're always city trucks, but there's other people using converters in some other facilities out there that have broader community impacts. I wanted to highlight in your added communication package on 163, as we look at the right of first refusal and property value protection plans, some residents are raising questions. You'll hear from these residents again, come the formal public participation meeting, both as part of the Public Liaison Committee and as individuals, but they are really interested and want to be engaged. They've been waiting for this opportunity. There's also going to be, as late on in your report, communications going out to residents who live within two kilometers of landfill. I thank staff for using the property boundary of the landfill, not from the middle of it or anything, to make sure that residents have engaged, and residents will be doing extra engagement as part of the PLC outside that area as well, realizing that the odors travel in the wind and can have an effect farther away, that when we have this conversation at committee, that they are doing lots of extra work for us to make sure that we have an informed decision to start this conversation that will now be regular going forward. So just really thanking staff and highlighting that, so when you start to get emails or requests to come out and hang out in South London with us, and come and smell the air, feel free to come down. And I want to thank Councillor Privile for joining these meetings. They are open to every, to the community and members of council, and they welcome anyone who wants to come and sit in at their conversations at any time. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll look for any other speakers on this matter. Seeing none, that's moved by the Chair. We'll open this for voting.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 15 to 0.
Back to you, Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. That leaves us to the last item. That's item 16, for the residential rental unit licensing bylaw. It was pulled by Councillor Cuddy. I will put that on the floor.
Okay, so that's on the floor. Councillor Cuddy, something you wanted to add to this?
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you for allowing me to pull this. I'd like this voted on two parts, A and B, and I'll be very, very brief. You know when you've got a really good motion, when it's supported by all members, and we had unanimous support Chair at committee. And I'm really grateful to staff, to Mr. Maythers, for helping me prepare this, to Ms. Pfeiffer for her first time on the job at pulling a motion together, and also to Ms. Pollitt for helping me clear the legal hurdles in this. This will empower permanent residents, residents who are looking for greater autonomy in their area, and to allow them to take a little better control of their neighborhood, areas of Ward 3 where I live, or sorry, where I'm a Ward councillor, and also I might mention to Councillor Trossow in Ward 6, where we have a lot, great deal number of students and transients living in these areas. I would say that in B part, and that's why I'm asking my colleagues to support A and vote against B, and the reason I'm asking this, Your Worship, is because I feel after passing this motion, that there's probably too much pressure being put onto a bylaw and to Ms. Pfeiffer and her team to regulate through a report card system, because they'd have to be constantly reviewing and reporting. And I think that's just a lot to ask for staff right now, and I think if we just went with a simple bylaw that's proposed in A, that would be sufficient. So, thank you.
Okay, so the request is just to divide this. As it came out of committee, we can certainly do that at the time of the vote. I'll look for other speakers on this item. Councillor Trossow.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I actually thought that A and B worked well together, as I stated at the committee. I understand what you're saying, and I'd be okay if we made it clear that the B report could be actually a longer deferral. But we do it for restaurants, and I would really like to look into how the health unit deals with that type of sign for a restaurant. People live here. In the long run, I think this is going to come back, so I don't think it's that big of an issue right now. I do appreciate the work that you've done on this. I will be supporting both parts of this, and I'd be very happy to see an amendment to B, or just have an understanding with staff that that's not as much of a priority as A. With that, I think that's all I have to say. I'm glad this came forward, and thank you again.
Any other speakers to this item? Oh, I have Councillor Privile and then Deputy Mayor Lewis.
Thank you. I'm glad it was separated, because even I wasn't happy with the B already at a standing committee meeting, and as I use the example of the restaurants, I don't believe we do have currently the resources to do it in this sector, and I believe it would actually backfire on us, that whoever would be seeing this, let's say, green color or whatever we would use, it would be outdated, and potentially the operator would be actually not even in compliance anymore. So thank you for separating it. I'll be supporting very much A. I will not be supporting B. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Lewis.
Thank you, Chair, and through you. I, too, am happy that this is separated. It makes it easier for me. I won't be supporting B at this time, although I understand Councillor Trossow's intent, and I think that there's actually a better way to do this than signage on the outside of a building, which I think that many folks largely don't pay attention to at the end of the day. And I think frankly, that's true of restaurants, too. I don't know too many people who look to see the Middlesex London Health Unit green card in a restaurant. I know Councillor Frank does, because she's a member of that board, but I suspect that not too many members of the general public look at that when they go into a restaurant. I do think that there's an opportunity for future discussions with staff around whether or not we could have details about active bylaw compliance files on our city maps, on our website, what that might look like, but I think that that's a much longer sort of discussion. I know at one point, prior to the current version of the website, so this is going back to my early days as a member of council, I was able to actually look up online. I could put it in an address, and I could see a history of the property. Now, it wasn't easy to navigate to. It certainly would have been difficult for the public, but at the same time, not only could I see if a bylaw call had been assigned to an address, but I could actually see if a driveway widening permit had been issued, or a deck permit had been issued, or that kind of thing. Long before any of our current senior leadership team was sort of in the roles that they're in today, that kind of went away. There was, you know, website updates, and somehow that got lost in translation. And so I think that there is some value, but I think an online system is far better than signage on the side of a building. It allows even councillors to look things up in real time, and we know whether we're creating a duplicate file, and I mean this not just for bylaw, but for planning and building division as well. If somebody's asking about, you know, the status of a permit, and I could put in an address and see that the permit's in process, whether that's a deck permit or driveway permit, as I mentioned before, or whatever, I think that would be a useful tool. And I will share, I've had some discussions already with three different members of our senior leadership team, in general, just sort of over coffee, kind of, hey, is this something we could look at? And so I'm certainly willing to take time to sit down with Councillor Trossow after, you know, sometime later this week or next week, find time to sit down and talk to you about that. But that's why I'm not going to support B right now, because I actually think there's an alternate option for us to look into. That would be more of an online digital tool versus a signage on a particular property. I do think, however, it's very important to have that contact information on a residential rental unit, on a converted dwelling, where we have, and I say this as someone who has a student rental next door to my own home. There have been years where I have had absolutely wonderful students. There have been other years that it has been less so. And it would be ideal if I could have a conversation with the owner rather than have to file a bylaw complaint. So I think that having that contact information on a rental unit supplements what we already have on our zoning maps online, where we can see if an RRUL has been issued or is in process already. That's a layer I use regularly when constituents say, hey, I've got a problem next door and it's a rental. The first thing I check is to see if they have an RRUL, because that's a whole different problem if they don't. So I think that there's some further discussion to be had around here, but I think that the signage of contact is a really important first step for us to take today. And then, I know both Councillor Cuddy and Councillor Trossow are on caps, I would like to have an opportunity to talk to both of you about maybe a future motion that we could bring independent of this. And I know, Councillor Trossow, you're not able to respond to that in the meeting, because you've already spoken, but I'm offering my commitment to meet with both of you about how we could perhaps look at something that might be a little bit more effective tool here.
Any other speakers to this? Councillor Ferrera.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be quick. So I agree with the Deputy Mayor in putting that into the property information system. I do think that would be a good addition for that, and just not going too far off to the side, but all of our information in one's place for people to get their information would probably be best, just because I don't like telling people, this is where you go for this, this is where you go for this. If it was all in one spot, that would make it definitely easier. I'll support A. I won't be supporting B, just because of, from what I've heard here. And I did make some remarks at committee about my concerns with A. However, I do know that staff are going to come back with a report, and will come back with something that will fit and work. So I'm not going to make any adjustments as it is now, but I do want to work with Councillor Cuddy, or the Deputy Mayor and Councillor Trossow on this one, too, because I do have a good segment of residential properties, or, sorry, rental properties in my ward as well. So I'm looking forward to that, but I'll keep the comments there, and I will be supporting A, and I will support section B.
Yes, and I'll just say, no forms of committee will be working on anything. So that was one too many people. You guys pick and choose who's going to work on what, and bring it forward to the committee for a full discussion in public. Just looking out for everybody. So, any other speakers on this? Okay, great. Seeing none, we will, and then B, so I'm going to open A for voting first.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 15 to 0.
And now we'll open B for voting.
Closing the vote. Motion fails. 0 to 15.
Well, you don't see that often. That was a pretty good debate, I suppose. Chair, I think you're finished, but I'll go back to you.
I am finished. You don't see that often too much for caps nowadays, 30 minutes probably, so that concludes the 12th report of the Community and Protective Services Committee.
Well, thank you very much. We'll move on then to the 13th report of Planning Environment Committee. I'll turn it over to Chair Lehman to present that report.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be pulling 12. I have a small, minor housekeeping amendment from staff. Besides that one, I've had requests to pull 8, 19, and 20.
I think, I don't know if that's a complete list. I just want to make sure. So right now you've got 8, 12, 19, and 20 separate.
Correct.
People like other items separate. Oh, I think, Councillor Ferrera, you sent in to the clerk that you wanted 14 separate? Or no? Was that a?
Mayor, for PEC, that was item 14, yeah, and bill 333.
Yeah, okay, so we'll do that separate for you. So now we've got 8, 12, 14, 19, and 20. Councillor Frank, go ahead.
Thank you, and if we could pull item 22 for a separate vote?
Sure, we'll do 22 separate as well. So 8, 12, 14, 19, 20, 22. Anything else separate? All right, I'll go back to you, Chair.
Okay, I'll put items 1 through 7, 9, 10, and 11, 13, 16 through 18, 21, 23, and 24 by the floor.
You skipped 15. I don't think anybody asked for 15 separate. Can we include that?
Did I not say 15?
No.
My apologies.
Okay, we're going to put 15 to that grouping as well. So to recap, it'll be 1 through 7, 9 through 11, 13, 15 to 18, 21, 23, and 24.
I'll move those.
Okay, moved by the Chair. Looks like everybody's in concurrence. Any discussion on those items that are before us now? All right, seeing none, we're going to open those items for voting. Okay, we're going to open that for voting then.
Councillor Ferrera. Thank you. Closing the vote. Motion carries 15 to 0.
Okay, go back to you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. I'll put number 8 on the floor.
Okay, number 8's on the floor. I know I had a message from Councillor Ramon on this, as well as Councillor Hopkins. I'll go to Councillor Ramon first.
Thank you, and through you, I have circulated language for an amendment on this item. Do you want me to read it out?
Yes, please.
Thank you. It is now in Escrib. Okay, so it's clause 2.7, Medway Valley ESA, that the motion be amended to include new parts B and C, to read as follows. B, the civic administration be directed to report back with options addressing property encroachments, including related considerations and impacts for the properties at 1634 to 1786 Adewandron Road. And C, that civic administration be directed as part of CMP review to include passive recreation consistent with the historical use of Adewandron Road Park, defined as the area between the pathway at 1726 Adewandron Road North and the pathway at 1630 Adewandron Road South, and to outline how the space will be maintained moving forward.
Okay, is there a seconder for that? Seconded by Deputy Mayor Lewis. Okay, so the amendment is on the floor then. So this is Councillor Ramon's amendment. Would you like to speak to that now? Okay, so you can speak to it. You put it on the floor, but you're going to speak to it not now. I'll look for other speakers then to this. Councillor Frank, go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, I had some questions that I circulated to the solicitor, and it turns out that they are likely in-camera items related to this amendment, so I was hoping to put request to go in camera to discuss some legal questions on this item.
Okay, and thank you for doing that, because it allows us to have prepared a reason for you. So I'm going to read out the reason to go into camera, which you will be making a motion to, then I'll look for a seconder. The reason would be a matter pertaining to advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege, including communication necessary for the purpose from the solicitor and officers or employees of the corporation. Subject matter pertains to litigation or potential litigation with respect to the Medway Valley Heritage Forest environmentally significant area south conservation master plan. I'll look for a seconder for that reason to go into camera, seconded by Councillor Ferrera. Any discussion on going to camera?
Point of order.
Point of order. Okay, point of order.
My point of order procedurally, through you, Your Worship, is simply that we have an amendment on the floor, so I want clarification from you that we're going in camera on the amendment, because we haven't dispensed with the amendment. So are we going in camera on the amendment, or the main motion? Because if we haven't dispensed with an amendment, it's the amendment that's on the floor.
Okay, so Councillor Frank, you said that your questions were on the amendment. Are they on the amendment, or is there any on the main motion, too?
Fortunately or unfortunately, I have questions that are both on this amendment as well as other litigation questions in regards to AODA, which is not in this one, but this one is in regards to encroachments. So I have ones for both.
Okay, so to answer the point of order, which is really a question of the order, we will go in on the amendment. Councillor Frank will be able to ask the questions about the amendment. We will come back to public session. We will dispense with the amendment in some way. There will be either the original motion or is that an as amended motion, at which point, if there are questions related to something that the solicitor says we have to go into camera, we will then have another motion to go back in camera on either the as amended or the main motion. So we may go into camera twice on this, but we will keep our in-camera questions scoped to the amendment, which is on the floor, and so Councillor Frank could ask those questions. So that's how we will proceed, and I will keep the discussion tight in camera around the questions related to the amendment. Okay? All right, so the point of order is dispensed with. Any other discussion? Okay, then we're going to open the vote on going in camera for the reason mentioned on the amendment.
Councillor Hopkins?
I vote yes.
Noted, thank you. Closing the vote. Motion carries 15 to 0.
Okay, we'll go to Committee Room 5. Okay, we'll go to Committee Room Five.
Okay, thank you. Please be seated. So, Councilor Frank, you had the floor on this item when you asked to go on camera. So, on the amendment, do you have anything further you want to add for the public discussion? No? Okay. Just want to reserve your right to finish your speaking. I'll move on to the next speaker, which I will look for, whoever would like to speak next at this time. Deputy Mayor Lewis.
Thank you, worship. So through you, I want to express fully supportive of both of these amendment clauses. You know, with respect to Clause C, I've certainly heard clearly that there's a desire for some continued passive park space use on the area that was traditionally defined as Adewandere Park. What that looks like, of course, is a discussion for the future, but I'm certainly willing to support that. And with respect to Part B, I think, again, there's an entire area here where we need to consider if we're removing the trail as Part A would empower what the future direction would be. It obviously changes what the plan that was brought forward in the CMP was. I will point out that we are talking in Part A, and I'm going to relate this back to Part B, of about 639 meters total, according to mapping it out on the city zoning map. So, when I drew out where the proposed trail was, it's, we're talking about less than three-quarters of a kilometer. It is impacting a number of properties. And through you, I want to ask our city solicitor, just in general, would I be correct in saying that options could include a variety of things? And we've actually used a variety of different approaches to things in the city over decades, over in different locations. Could be licensing agreements, could be easements, could be property sales, could be enforcing the existing encroachment violations. That there's options, a number of options that staff could consider through a report and bring back to us for a unified approach in this area if we approve Part B.
Yes, and so I'll say, you can list the options that could come back. Obviously, the staff analysis, given the direction of what will come back is not determined at this point, but it would be part of the referral. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, and through you, worship. That's correct. There are a number of different options. I think the deputy mayor set them out in terms of enforcement. There could be sale of land, easement agreements, encroachment, licensing agreements, that sort of thing.
Thank you. So, you know, given the representations we heard at PEC, having walked the trail myself and seen where some of the significant challenges are, I think that we do need to look at options moving forward. I'm fully supportive of the original motion at committee, and I think that this is a reasonable next step if this main motion as amended is passed. So I'm going to be fully supportive of this.
Other speakers. Go ahead. Guys, Councilor Plosa and then Councilor Ferrera.
Thank you. We were jostling over here for position. I'm going to ask two things. One, my eScribe, for some reasons, I did shut it down and I did reload. It's still not there. David's looks fine. So I'm going to ask for the wording to be up here. And we're having some sort of, the wording's not in eScribe and doesn't even show us the current item. So I appreciate that. On the amendment, I'll ask two things publicly. item. So I appreciate that. On the amendment, I'll ask two things publicly. C, I'd already asked staff, that the addresses laid out is the space that's currently identified in the city park addresses as the green, open green space that would be actually associated with the Atawandron Park and the park entrances.
Ms. McNeely had sent me a lovely picture, if it helps.
Yeah, we'll get you an answer. We're just, Mr. Maythers is going to take this one.
Through the chair, yes, they do align. Thanks.
Thank you. I just wanted to start the conversation from that premise, that the addresses were correct and the green space as identified as, as we move through this discussion. I did take the opportunity for residents, thank you to those on both sides of the issue, who wrote, both as residents, as people who were concerned about accessibility, for those who are concerned about environmental impacts and concerns. I did take the opportunity to listen to the podcast that a resident wanted me to listen to as I walked the area. I also apologize to any residents, as some of it does get, I would say, shoulder width in length, and there was dogs in backyards in the home. So I apologize for anyone that was startled by my presence. I also took the opportunity to pop in and talk with staff at the museum. I was there to have a little bit better understanding of what they're using for any overflow programming space with that property as well, recognizing there's street parking, but there's no park parking per se. It's their parking lot, and I know that they get into some issues with maintenance and people coming when it's their property, but people are parking there for city property. They did say that they do use this open green space for some overflow things, for the bylaws that we attended in the past when those were happening pre-COVID. So I appreciate that information. I will also highlight that as other, some pathways in the city have been overgrown a little bit and in need of maintenance as we're talking about just trying to access the area. For me, I do support more of the naturalization of the area up to people's backyards and preserving the green space. I know there's some at the schools, but knowing that that institution as well uses this space to see that as a compromise going forward, I'll say my concerns tend just to be people's use of that area. I did follow up with staff, and this was a conversation at PEC regarding backyard gates. Can you have them? Can you not have them? And thanking staff for that follow-up, that yes, you are permitted to have them. They're not illegal. Just, it would be with the backyard gates allowing more access to an environmentally sensitive area if there isn't controlled access or depending what they're doing back there while you're trying to protect that area. So that's where that concern came from and ended up in an answer. So generally supportive of where we're at and why. And just want to let residents know that I did take the time to go out, walk the area, talk to some people who use the space, and that's where my thoughts are coming from.
Counselor Ferrera.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the discussion up to this point. It's been quite informative. I do have some questions to staff on the amendment only. So I just wanted to ask, I guess my first one, and it would be with respect to Section B on the options addressing property encroachments. So I just wanted to know, what mechanisms does compliance have right now to address issues with encroachment? Like, what mechanisms would we utilize when we contact an encroaching party?
Yeah, I think that, that's very similar to the question, I think, that was just asked. So I don't know if the solicitor or Mr. Maythers wants to answer that, but either one of you can take that.
Through the chair. So, of course, we want to try to work with the residents to try to address the encroachments. If that is not followed up on after those back and forth, then there is the opportunity to go to administrative monetary penalties, or AMPs as we call them, or to a court order.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for that. So I do see that, I guess, the ways we address the encroachment would be to take, like, when it comes to city public property, to have it back within the city control and domain, would be kind of the answer for the encroachment there. So I guess my next question would be for the direction of this motion. I'm not asking you to crystal ball anything, but I just wanted to know, options addressing property encroachment would be beyond what we currently have. So would that option include potentially to allow the encroachment with perhaps some conditions in a certain situation? Like, would that be a potential option that we might see back with this report?
I, so there's kind of a two-question there. Earlier, this solicitor was asked, what are the general options available to the city? I guess your question is, what are the options that might be considered with this report? Mr. Maythers can attempt to answer that, but I, I mean, I don't know how much advanced notice he's had on this particular motion, but I anticipate that staff would probably need to do some work at some point to be more comprehensive in that list. I mean, Mr. Maythers, I don't, I don't, I'm not, what I'm trying to do is protect you from being put on the spot to say, this is what the report is going to say back, because I know you need time to do the report. But maybe anything you can add to what the solicitor said as, here's the range of options, how you would approach the report might assist the counselor with this question.
Through the chair. So I want to reiterate what had been mentioned by the city solicitor, and just reinforce that they would need to be something that was quite formal. It can't just be some very impractical, like impractical or guidelines for us to follow. We need something very formal to follow, to ensure that anything that we want to do as far as enforcement in the future that we could. So that would be our guideline. We'd be working with legal to see what we can provide and provide that formality to counsel.
Go ahead. Thank you for that. So I understand that we need to, I guess, bring a formality to the conversation, but I do feel pretty comfortable with our mechanisms that we have now when it comes to encroachment on public property. So when I see the motion as it is, saying options addressing property encroachments, that speaks to me that we potentially could be seeing options that are beyond what we have right now. And I believe when it comes to the encroachments, the mechanisms that we use are appropriate. So I wouldn't be willing to see other options, especially considering that the option, options, the word itself in this motion is quite open and would allow options that may result from what I, what I would see would be potentially allowing that encroachment or potentially foregoing the city public property. So I wouldn't be in support of that as it is now. And I guess that would be my comments for that. So I guess if we can split this up, I don't, I guess I can speak more to the motion as amended if we get there, but I wouldn't be supportive of that. I wouldn't be supportive of C. So if you can just, I guess, split it up, and I may make some more comments with the motion as amended.
Yeah, we can, we can vote on B and C separately. That's no problem. I have Counselor Hopkins next.
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. And I'm going to wear my Board Nine Counselor hat here as I speak to the amendment. I am not supportive of the amendment. For me, it's very, very simple. I think we're going down a slippery slope when we start addressing certain areas and not addressing others. So being on council for quite a few years, I've been to encounter many, many encroachments throughout the years. And I always rely on our policies. I think we, as a council, should stay away from our conversations around encroachments and rely on our bylaws. And I rely on staff. I have confidence in staff to make the decisions. I need, as a counselor, if I'm going to say yes over here, and I've said no over here, I need to have a reason why, and I depend on the consistency of our bylaws. So I do appreciate the counselor's work in supporting the community here, but I am not going to be supporting the amendment.
Counselor Trosseau, you're next.
Thank you very much, through the chair. I am not going to be supporting either parts of this amendment. I think we're really running some very serious risks here. When we start saying, we have a bylaw regime, which is what we're using, which is what we used for the loss in estates, it's what we use for other alleged encroachments throughout the city, it's what we've used historically. And if we want to review the policy of how we are going to deal with encroachments, alleged encroachments, I should say, we should do that prospectively, and we should have a full study, including what's wrong with the current system. But to say, we're going to put on the table, get a report back with options for how we're going to change our already existing policy with respect to just a small group of properties, I think we're running the risk of all sorts of discriminatory enforcement allegations that could come from a variety of different places, not just the loss in estate people, not just the folks from other wards who have other types of encroachments, but even people on the street who have already, I don't know if settled is the right word, but have removed their alleged encroachments that are no longer facing enforcement activities. Are they going to come back and say, oh, gee, I didn't know we were going to get this, so no, I want to undo what I agreed with you before? So I think we're opening up, I think the term can of worms is probably overused, but boy, this is a big can of worms, and I think we should be very careful about this. I can't support C either, because I think what the position taking consistently is that I have a, I have a commitment to the decided matter of council, which, of course, we can change. Decided matter of council. Unanimously, I watched the public participation meeting in 2021. I read the Dillon Report in detail. I read the comments from all the community groups, which did not, did not have issues with the encroachments, even from this community. So I think C is, again, stepping out from what good prospective policymaking would look like. And let's, let's, let's keep in mind that nothing is settled in terms of the actual design that's going to happen. Maybe I could ask Steph, if we defeat this motion today and stick with what's already on the table, there still are design implementation consultations that are going to go on with the neighborhood. Is that correct?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Your Worship. There would be fairly limited opportunity to provide a lot of design options, given the narrowness of the corridor and the proximity to the natural heritage features. Generally, for something like this, because it was extensively engaged as part of a master plan, we would only go forward if we had options we were soliciting feedback on. I don't believe there would be many options in terms of what we can build in this space.
In terms of the location of the Level Three trail, though, that is not, that has not been determined, and there are engineering considerations that may push part of that out to the street or push it to a different area. Isn't that, isn't that right?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Your Worship. The corridor is quite constrained without having to go into putting into retaining walls or impacting the naturalized space. There's not a lot of room for variation. I don't believe there was a street alternative, but I would defer to my colleagues in planning as to whether there may be alternatives outside of this space.
I'm trying to get clear on exactly what the parameters of the recommendations in the Dillon Report that was adopted by council. And I'm sorry that the planner who worked on this file is not here. It's one of the reasons why I'd like this deferred. I'm not going to speak to the referral right now, but I just don't see that C adds anything of value to what we already have, and I will be voting no on both parts. If somebody wants to vote yes on one and not on the other, we should definitely separate the two. But at least for purposes of this amendment, I would say, I would say no to both. Most of my comments I'll be reserving for motions that have not come up yet.
Okay. I'll look for other speakers. Counselor Privile.
Thank you. And the motion that's in front of us, I do think that it certainly resolves or gives a good option, fair option for where we are right now. But what I heard during the last, I don't know, 45 minutes, probably an hour, I do agree that we really need to look at this and not to do this kind of a decision. Maybe on the fly might be really not the best description, but I really think we need to revisit this, because this is not one thing. And I'm not even going to look in the past, but even the future. And I really think that we really need to have a strategy, how we are going to address these, because today it's this one, and next month it could be another one. So I will not be supporting this motion. Thank you.
Other speakers. Counselor Ramen, go ahead.
Thank you, and through you, Mayor. So I want to start speaking to the amendment on Part B, and with respecting the role that we serve as members of council when it comes to matters related to bylaw and encroachments. The encroachment discussion that we're engaging in for these properties is tied explicitly to Part C, which has to do with the passive uses around this, this current, as the neighbors know it, park, labeled as a park, shown as a park, feels like a park. I'll state that if you look at, you know, back in 2015, our London Fire mascot was out reporting on how great of an open space this is in a community, and what a great feature this is in our city, because it is. And we hear from the museum who uses this space regularly, school groups who use this space, community members who talk about the passive use that they get out of this space. And for me, that's what's important to retain in this conversation, is how is the area used? Right now, the area is quite firm and stable in terms of the grounds around the, the back of these properties. I've walked it many times. I walked it again in a segment last night. I went out and saw neighbors that were walking up from Fanja Park Road into Atawandron, onto the sidewalks to connect to the remaining sidewalks that are right now in the entrance to the Museum of Archaeology, and they would be what we consider a Level Three. There is connectivity here. There is connectivity on a passive road, on a road that, in my opinion, doesn't see a lot of traffic. So when we're talking about adding a trail, a Level Three trail, and by the way, I've read the CMP extensively, I've read the feedback in the CMP. Initially, the recommendation was either a Level Three or a Level Two trail in this area. It then became, and that was a recommendation coming out of two committees. And it did say that upper Thames be, continue to be consulted as a feasibility study goes forward to determine their support and approach as this moves forward, if this was to go to a Level Three trail. So I do think that there was, again, more to be found out from a feasibility study. But you see this trail system as it is right now being used, and it's in its firm and stable condition. The challenge is, of course, there are constraints, which have been mentioned. You do walk in quite close quarters, as I know a lot of my colleagues have taken that walk. I've done it with neighbors in the area. And yes, I agree, it would be great to see that as a wider expanse. The challenge that I see is that there's a lot of erosion in the area. There is difficulty in the terrain just from the way that things have naturally settled. But isn't that somewhat what we want? We want that natural settlement. We want those natural features. It's what we heard from the residents as well. They wanted that opportunity for passive activation, and they wanted the opportunity to be able to enjoy what's there. This issue of encroachments, again, it comes back to what do we currently see and envision in that space? Well, the encroachments, to me, are very much tied to the fact that we wanted to expand the area. So this asks for options to come back. What those are, I am not sure at this point, but I want to hear back from staff. And it's respective of the rest of the motion, which asks for consideration for the trail not to go forward at a Level Three.
Other speakers on the, oh, sorry, I got Counselor Lehman next, and then I'll look for other speakers.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank the counselor for this motion. It's an amendment that I think enhances the recommendation coming from PEC. I have as well, it sounds like a number of us have been down there, been down to this particular area, small little park behind a residential street, out there with about 15 residents, you know, and hearing their concerns. You know, the outside was a very, it wasn't complex, but it was muddied, and how do we find our way forward was a concern of PEC. And I think this amendment provides additional clarity in how we should look at this. So there's two things. One is the encroachment issue, and the other one is the park use. One is the, the encroachment issue and the other one is the park use. I differ from some of the opinions here on the encroachment issue. In the past, the city has dealt with, with this with either easements or land purchase discussions. And I think this is, falls along that path. I look forward to the report back at what, what suggestions from staff they have on finding a resolution there. With the second part of this amendment is not just saying, what are we doing now with this piece of property? If we're not going forward with what was currently envisioned, what's the future issue here? And I think this, this addresses that. So thank you. It enhances the recommendation from PEC, as I said, and I will support it.
Other speakers. Okay. As was requested, we're going to deal with this in two different votes. We're going to do B first and then we're going to do C second. So I'm going to open B for voting first.
Closing the vote, motion carries nine to six.
Okay. And next is C, so we'll open C for voting now.
Counsel Tresso. Closing the vote, motion carries nine to six.
Okay. So that is, okay. Counsel Hopkins, sorry.
I do have a referral.
Okay. Let me get a mover and a second for the as amended motion first, which is what I was just about to do. So that means I need a mover for the as amended motion. Counsel Ramon, seconded by Deputy Mayor Lewis. The as amended motion is on the floor. Counsel Hopkins, now you can speak if you'd like.
Thank you, and I appreciate your due diligence, making sure we follow our process. So thank you for recognizing me. I do have a referral that I would like to put on the floor, and I am looking for a seconder. And I have one in Counsel Frank.
Okay. And if you could.
I can read it.
Yeah, that'd be great because I, then the public will know exactly what the referral is, so.
That the proposed changes to the Medway Valley Heritage Forest environmentally significant area self conservation master plan be referred to civic administration to report back at a future meeting at the Planning and Environment Committee, including consideration of potential design alternatives for the trail, specific resident concerns regarding its location and design, and matters related to accessibilities for Ontarians and disabilities act AODA compliance.
Okay. So would you like to speak to that now, Counsel?
Yeah, if I, if I can.
Hold on. Yes. Sorry, Counsel Frank, a point of order perhaps? Yeah. Point of order.
Thank you. Point of order. The correct motion, I believe, has the last sentence dropped.
Yeah, that was just, we'll get that fixed. It's not what the counselor said, so we'll correct it to be exactly as the counselor had said. That should be changed in the system now, so I'll let you continue on with your remarks, Counsel Hopkins.
Yeah, thank you. I am hoping, colleagues, that you will support the referral back. I think we've had a lot of conversation here. Got residents feedback, we got community feedback on the trail at Adewandron Park. There has been extensive work done on this conservation plan. I know all my time on council, it has been a, a lot, a work in progress, and it was unanimously supported in 2021. I know it's our prerogative, we can always make changes to plans along the way, but the referral back will take into account all the options, all the considerations that we've heard and have staff come back to a Planning and Environment Committee with these alternatives. My concern here is that if we sort of poke away at a conservation plan with really not understanding the consequences to the decisions, we need some time, get some information back, alternatives, and then we can proceed forward. I personally don't think there's a big rush that we need to do this, but we have to go carefully just to understand what we are doing. So colleagues, please support the referral. I think we've heard a lot of feedback from residents that we can incorporate with the alternatives going forward. So again, looking for your support.
Okay. I'll look for other speakers on the referral. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Lewis.
Thank you, colleagues. So I'm rising to encourage you to defeat the referral. We had an extensive discussion about this at PEC. We've had a discuss, an extensive discussion about it here already. Yes, I was on council when it was approved. And you know what? I'm going to say right now, it was my mistake to support it the first time. I trusted feedback from the ward counselors in the Northwest. At the time, being a rookie counselor, I, you know, I didn't go out and walk the trail when I did. If I had to do it over again, I wouldn't have supported it back in 2021. I said this earlier, we are talking about 639 meters approximately of, of trail space. We've already heard from Ms. Share today that the physical layout of the site, the slope stability, the space that's available, does not allow for a whole lot of flexibility in design. We, when we hear about, you know, understanding the consequences, we're not changing the rest of the, the conservation master plan. We're removing one connection where there's already a paved trail on the very southern edge of Fanja Park Road coming in off the road that goes out to Adewandron Road itself, connects with a sidewalk down to the museum. And from there, there's access to another paved trail. There is a connection already. I don't need a referral to know that staff are not going to have a whole lot of design options for us. We've heard that today on the floor. I also know from, again, from having been out there, that if we continue on this path, there's a whole lot of other pieces before, besides just a staff report back, including an engineering feasibility study, which we've already heard, the old term was city engineer. We haven't used that in a while, but the, the deputy city manager who sort of has that role, you know, has already indicated there, there's some challenges there. We've heard from Counsel Ramon about the slope stability issues. We also have an ESA here. For those who have been out, we know that we're talking about tree removals as well. There are not, not every area of every ESA needs to be accessible by trail. In fact, I, and I said this at, at PEC, and I'm going to say it again today, I think that ESAs should be not encouraged to have a whole lot more human interaction going into them. I mean, they're environmentally significant areas for a reason, because of the natural environment that's there. So I'm not interested in a referral. I expressed my, my views for part A at PEC. I think we should put this one on the shelf or not go ahead with the trail. The additions that have been made to the main motion as amended, I'm comfortable with. And so with, with respect to a referral, you know, I think, and I know this is not the counselor's intent, but for me, in my opinion, we're just kicking the can down the road, and I would rather make the decision today. I don't need to ask staff to do more work on this. I'm confident with what I've seen with my own eyes that, that we're not going to go ahead with this trail for a variety of reasons that are there. And other counselors may want to go ahead with it, but I think that the general consensus at the end of the day is probably going to be that this isn't the right fit. And so I don't want to just refer this down the road, create all kinds of anxiety for residents, create anxiety for people on both sides of the issue. I'd rather give them a decision today.
Any other speakers to the referral? Go ahead, Counsel Tresso.
Well, I'm, I'm speaking in favor of the referral. We are making a substantial change. Whether some of the members of this council think it's a good change or not is beside the point. And whether you voted right the first time a few years ago is beside the point. We can all change our mind. But the fact of the matter is, we are making a very substantial change to a process that went on for years and years and years, and was reflected in the Dillon report, which I think is a very, very thorough report that talks about many of these considerations in some great detail. So to depart from that report, and by the way, I also watched the PEC public participation meeting, any of the issues at the PEC, PPM at that point were about the other side of, 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 of the creek. There was, there was really not much discussion about what was going on, on this site. I, I, I read through all of the neighborhood, all of the neighborhood comments, all of the other stakeholder comments. There was no mention of many of the things that we're going to talk about changing right now. So I, I think that one of the reasons why the referral is important is, what input have we had on this? We've had a delegation, some delegations come to a committee meeting that wasn't even noticed as a public participation meeting. Fundamental fairness would dictate that all the stakeholders who have been participating in this all along and who want to participate in it now have the opportunity. And we're not doing that if we close the matter today. And by the way, we're not closing the matter today because we just, we just voted on, we just voted on some amendments that are asking for further staff reports, which really suggests to me that the idea of having a referral may not be such a bad idea, but we should be consistent. We need a referral on this because otherwise what's going to happen is we are going to undermine the public perception of the integrity of our process. Because we can't go through something like the Dillon report and the various points of contact with the public, as pointed out in the letter. There have been so many of them, and to undo that based on one meeting that isn't even a public participation meeting, where here we are at the end of August, people don't even, many people don't even know that we're making this change. Yes, it was on the public agenda. I wonder how many members of the public make it a point to read the PEC agenda every week that it comes out? I just don't think it's fair. And one of the good things about referring this is when people come back in September, they're going to have opinions about this, especially if they're people that are already weighed in. And for all we've heard from people on one street about why they don't want this, there is a whole slew of people who do, including the very important accessibility community. And their concerns have to be taken into account. We can't characterize this as a special interest. Us, Steph, maybe you can help you with this. What percentage of people in London have some special needs or some, or some disability broadly construed?
Well, I hope you gave them a heads up on that question because that's statistics data, counted question, not sure they'll let it off the top of their head, but I can see if a staff member knows that. No, that's, might not be something that they have at their fingertips right now, Counsel. Go ahead, Mr. Maythers.
Yep. Through the chair. Sorry, I don't have that information currently.
Go ahead, Counsel.
Yet it's significant enough that we, we talked about accessibility and deal, and dealing, and dealing with the special needs of people that have disabilities in the strategic plan. We talked about it in several policy discussions that we've had at this council. And I think before we take a position that's contrary to that, we really need to open this up a little bit for a little bit more public feedback. Now, we may do that and come to the same conclusion that you're about to come to today, and I think I may be getting ahead of myself and speaking on the main motion, which I'll, which I'll reserve my comments on. But right now, the referral is going to be very healthy for a full democratic discussion on this. And if we cut off the referral, if we cut off the referral and go ahead and decide this today, I do believe that we will be undermining the public confidence in the processes that we go through. And by the way, this process went on for years, and there were many, many, many contacts.
Thirty seconds.
So in, 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 in closing, and I'll get back to some of the equity considerations when I make my point on the main motion, I think a referral here is absolutely essential. And we will be cutting short the public's ability to understand and participate in what we're doing if we don't do that. So please vote yes on the referral. Thank you very much.
Counsel Ferrer.
Thank you, mayor. So with the referral, like, is this kicking the can down the road? It is. However, I see two options before me. I see an option where we're going to take no action and everything's going to stop. Or I see, you know, kicking the can down the road, and to be consistent with that analogy, at least it gives us that road. Because as far as I see it, I would like to ensure that this space is accessible to everybody in London, and that's been the main point that has been sticking with me. So, you know, that would be the reason why I would support a referral. That would be the reason. It's not ideal for me. I would like to see the PEC recommendation not be supported, and I would like to see the work that's already been going on for years follow through and to see what we would like to see in the park, make it accessible. I will be supporting the referral because of that. Now, Counselor Tresso brought up a point that is sticking with me as well, and it is specifically, we did make some amendments that were approved, and that does tell me that we are going to get a report back. So that should be in, in alignment with this referral. So it does make sense with that aspect as well. And I would just, from, from that amendment that we supported, that amendment, from what I understand, is only specifically for those properties from 1634 to 1786, Adewandron. So a referral, in addition to the amendments that are specifically with those properties, does make sense in that situation. So just to pose a question to staff on this one, if we didn't support a referral, but we did get a report back for the amendments that this council supported, would that, would we have a delay there because we're waiting for that report? Like, those amendments coming back would kind of de facto act as a referral? So am I seeing this correctly?
Go ahead, Mr. Maythers.
Through your worship, I would just ask for clarification from, from the clerk, whether this is a referral of the entire motion that's on the floor, or if this would just be for the mid, part A that was originally there.
So I can clarify that, and then I can ask the clerk. So there's an as amended motion, which is being referred. So it's the as amended motion, council by majority changed the motion. Now this is being referred for the reasons that are noted in the referral. Council obviously has not made a final decision on the main motion. It's amended it, so, but you'll, you'll have, you'll be, the thing that we refer to includes the amendment.
So through your worship, this is a, of course, is a broader referral of all of the items. If you were referring those, those subparts as well, it would be, it would be less clear for us as having very specific language of what you want us to come back with. That's what we're always, our suggestion is, is just be very specific. And I think that what was initially included in that section B and C was very specific. If you're, if this referral moves forward, then we very much would just be focusing on the attributes that are within this referral, which is looking at those design alternatives.
Thank you for that. So this could turn out to be a referral for those amendments. So this could turn out to be a referral for those amendments that we just brought forward. So that, you know, I didn't vote for those amendments, but it does seem like that is leading the road to a referral. Maybe some other options in the language for this referral to broaden it a little bit might be worthy. However, with all that said, support of the referral does support the amendment that we saw here at council. So I guess I'm going to have to think about that just a little bit more, but I'll leave my remarks there.
Other speakers. Go ahead, Counselor Preble.
Thank you. So as a few minutes ago, as I said, I didn't support the B and C, and the reason why I didn't do it, and I'm very glad that there's no timeline for the staff to come back, because I really think that before we make, before the staff comes back to specifically address this area, we will have to look at the big picture and whole London. Again, we are here to protect the corporation, and we got to make sure that everything is aligned. So I'm glad there are no dates, and we have to look at the back city. Having said that, I was at this area as well, and when I went through it, there are two areas in the north part, about 100 yards each. It's so narrow and so steep that I really don't, I believe that we have many more or additional areas in London that would be much more suitable for such initiatives. And we do have certain initiatives there on the east side. This would be proposed on the west side. So bottom line is, I will not be supporting this referral. I will not, because I really don't think this is suitable, and I can't imagine that those 200 yards paths that's there would be coming back. I think it's actually dangerous, it's very steep, and I will, and therefore, I will not be supporting this referral. But please, going back to the first one, I hope when staff comes back with it, that we honestly look at the big picture citywide, not just making the encroachment just for this area. Thank you.
Other speakers to the referral. And I'll just ask people to try to keep it tight to the referral. There's a couple of strays a little bit along the way, but... Okay, so the referral is moved and seconded, so we'll move that for voting.
Your worship, can I sum up?
No, there's no sum up. You get to speak once at council, whether you make a motion or not, and you spoke at the start, so, okay, all right. Okay, so we're open this for voting.
Closing the vote, motion fails four to 11.
Okay, so now we're back to the as amended motion. So we'll open the speakers list on that. Go ahead, Counselor Ferrera.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll start it off, I'll be short. So I'm not going to be supporting the motion as amended, because for me, I think this is one of the most clearest examples of the zero-sum game that we find ourselves in a lot. Are we going to make this park accessible to everybody in London, or are we going to make this park accessible to some in London? I think we had a really good letter from the past chairs of the advisory committees, the community advisory committees. Several chairs have written that letter. It was very informing, for sure. And from what I understand, that this work has been going on for a while. There's been a lot of community input and feedback received throughout the years. And the main point that that letter that it had that really stuck out to me was, are we going to be debating people's human rights? Are we going to be debating charter rights? And for me, that is a big no-go for me. I'd like to open as much of this city up as I can to everybody in the city, and for that, I'm not going to be supporting the motion as it is. We've spoke to all the amendments and everything else, and I guess raised my concerns with that. But as it stands right now, I'm not going to be in support. And I would hope that we could get at least a simple majority to not support this as well.
A point of order? Go ahead, Counselor Tressau.
My inquiry, my point of order is, we had a motion before to go into closed session with respect to some of the substantive matters in the final motion, and I don't believe we've done that, and there are some questions pending. And if the solicitor is happy to entertain Counselor Frank's other issues here on the floor, we don't need to go into closed session, but there was the question about AODA compliance?
So Counselor, that's not a point of order. If a council wants to go into closed session, they can put themselves on the speakers list, and then they can ask to go in closed session. They don't need another member of council to suggest.
We did that before, and we decided to split the closed session.
Yes, and I said, we would, the council could make a motion to go back in closed session if they had questions at that time, but that would be a new motion to go in. We're not, we don't split it. It's, we went in for a very specific purpose. We can go in again if people would like to ask more questions of the solicitor, but that would be another motion to go into camera. The motion was specific to that. So if Counselor Frank would like to do that, she could do that. If she doesn't want to, she doesn't have to. Any other member of council would like to do that, they can, but it's not really a point of order. I'm just saying, to answer the question, people can get on the speakers list, and they can do that.
I'll wait until I'm on the speakers list, then, unless somebody else wants to make that motion.
No, you know what? You can do that. You don't have to suggest someone else do. People on the speakers list, they can make their own decisions, okay? This has been a long debate. People can keep it tight. So we go back into camera if people want, no problem. We're allowed to do that, but we don't need to jump up and try to help other people out. Every council knows how to do this work, and they can ask to go in camera if they feel they need to. I have Counselor Hopkins next.
Yes, your worship, I won't be supporting the motion, and I... I'm just reflecting on the many, many years of the conservation plan engagement process, and I do respect the process. I know we can make changes of the long way. I don't think this is the way to do it. I don't think any of us really understand the consequences here to making these changes and the implications that will result from that. I worry about that. I was hoping so much here to hear reasons why a referral wouldn't even be supported. To me, as much as I would like my colleagues to agree with me, it's about trying to understand the other side and the reasons why we are doing this, and I have not been convinced that this is the right way to do it, so I won't be supporting it.
Counselor Tressau.
Well, I'm not going to be supporting this motion. I don't think that's coming as a surprise to anybody. I think this is a very bad way to me be making policy based on a delegation. I'm very disappointed that the referral was not allowed. I do want to ask questions about AODA compliance. So before I use up any more of my time, may I ask the solicitor, is there a risk here that if the city passes the motion that's on the floor, which includes taking out the Level Three trail, are there potential AODA liabilities and issues that the city might be facing?
I'll go to the solicitor to see if you can answer any of that in public session.
Thank you. And through you, the AODA does require certain standards under its regulation. If we want to discuss specific legal risks, then we would have to go into closed session.
Counselor Tressau.
Since I'm standing and have the floor, then, I think my next sentence needs to be, I therefore move that we go into closed session for the purposes of discussing AODA compliance issues, including potential liability that the city might be facing if we pass the current motion.
Yeah, so with your indulgence, Counselor, we're going to use similar wording to what we used last time, just to be consistent with the way that we should be wording things to go into camera, so you can move that. Just for colleagues, the wording will be pretty much identical to the wording last time. It was on a specific amendment. The wording is good for now the main. And I'll look for a seconder to go, Counselor Frank. Okay, any discussion about going into camera? Okay, we'll open the vote, then.
Closing the vote motion carries twelve to three.
Thank you for your participation in today's conference. We will now move on to the next round of the House elections.
We're back in session. Everybody can be seated. Okay, we left off before we went into counsel. I are in closed session with Counselor Trosso, having the floor using up one minute and four seconds, speaking on the as amended motion. Your comments, Counselor.
My grave concern about the as amended motion does include the potential for serious liability, in my opinion, and I can only give my opinion here, but I've heard nothing today to dissuade me from that. And I think the courts and disability rights lawyers have gotten very creative in recent years. And while I don't purport to be an expert in disability law, I have read enough case law, especially recent law.
Point of order from Counselor Ramon. Go ahead. Can you turn off your mic, Counselor Trosso?
Thank you, and through you, I have some concerns that we're weighing into some issues that our opinion, legal opinion of a counselor, not of our legal representatives from the city. I just want to be clear that we are not here to debate legality right now. My point is that the counselor should stay on the item that we are here to discuss.
Yes, so I will say counselors are allowed to share their opinions, and as long as they're following the proper decorum of the rules of procedure. There are many counselors who will suggest that they have opinions on matters, whether they be legal or policy-related. But I will make clear from the chair that no counselor does speak for the legal position of the city. No counselor speaks for the solicitor's opinion. And the only caution I would make any counselor, and I'll do that broadly, is not to be suggestive or imply any position that, you know, the solicitor is, will, or has given in any sort of way. And obviously, we wouldn't talk about any sort of in-camera positions that, or discussions that we've had as per the bylaw. So I'll let the counselor proceed with that general caution for all. But the counselor can express his own opinions, but he should not be projecting those as any sort of opinions of the corporation or its solicitor or anything else.
Thank you, and I most certainly to assure the mayor that I would never do that. I'm speaking for myself. I'm speaking for my, I think, very well-informed opinion, and that's all I'm speaking for here. Now, let me turn from the legal questions to the procedural questions. I think it's already been well-stated that we've been through consultations on this for years, over a decade, through successive councils, involving many, many different stakeholders, involving many different groups, including the neighbors here. That's not subject to dispute. And the representations that were made by the representative of the Atawandron Neighbors is in the 2021 Dillon Report. It's been there for years. No one has tried to say, "This is wrong. We should fix it." And if you think there's something that's been represented in the Dillon Report that's wrong, it should have been stated a long time ago, particularly at the public participation meeting that the PEC held, which several of you were at, that adopted the Phase Two report. Let me now turn to some ethical issues, and that's about ableism. And we've heard quite a bit about this. And again, this is my opinion. I had the opportunity of listening to the Matt Brown podcast and some of the other representations that were made by Mr. Menard, conversations I've had over the years with other experts in the disability community. This is a serious issue. This is a serious issue. We cannot write out the needs. Somebody sent me a note saying it's one-seventh of the population. I don't know if that's right or not, but it's significant. We have to take the needs of the disability community seriously. And the idea of pitting neighborhood interests or park interests or environmental interests against accessibility interests is something we should avoid. These are all valuable goods that could be harmonized, that should be harmonized. And I do point to the strategic plan from time to time, because I think the strategic plan was a good example way back in time, at the beginning of this council term, of a document that had very, very strong aspirations. Now, how much time do I have left, Mayor?
Thirty-five seconds.
In closing, then, I think we would be making a grave mistake procedurally, from a policy perspective, in my opinion legally, in my opinion ethically, if we proceed with this motion as amended. I think we missed an opportunity to not get the more fulsome information that I think we would benefit from at this point by voting down the referral.
Counselor, your time is up.
Okay, so please vote no on this, and thank you very much for your time.
Other speakers to the as amended motion. Okay, Counselor Ramon and Deputy Mayor Lewis.
Thank you, and through you, so I'll just provide some concluding remarks. So first, I want to thank all those that have reached out to communicate their thoughts on the motion, and specifically the removal of the trail section of Atawandron Road Park. I hear the concerns of those that have formally served as accessibility chairs in our community. I understand the perspective that they're sharing, and I appreciate the concerns that they've raised. I want to mention a few things. So again, you know, this trail, the system is in the area close to where I live, not this section, but the north part of the Medway Trail. And I've read the CMP extensively. I've read the feedback that's provided in the CMP. I read the feedback that was minuted from committees, and specifically the language around either a Level Two or a Level Three trail as being part of the discussion in the Atawandron area. And there was representation, you're absolutely right, from one person from the Atawandron neighborhood. And I don't know if everybody remembers where they were in 2021, but I was not doing a lot of community engagement. I was not involved with, other than school board engagement, but I was not involved with a lot of these types of large engagement sessions because of the way that they were happening at the time. In this case, most of these meetings were online. And so when I look at the engagement that happened during that period, and this one actually, the last one, July 27, 2021, that's recorded from that discussion on the south side, I see the commentary, and you can see that there was maybe not a fulsome understanding of potential impacts at the time related to how that trail system would go in in that section. But I want to be very clear that this is actually not the entirety of that span of the access point from Fanshawe Park Road. This is actually almost the midway point to where the pinch point is in the backyards of these neighborhoods, where the slope starts to fall off and the erosion is quite, in my opinion, evident, which means that there is still opportunity for us, and it's why it says undertake a review, to go back to the plan and to look at the portion of the segment of this that still spills out from Fanshawe Park Road, goes into Atawandron, and comes back onto the street through a paved pathway that's already in place. So there is that section that has that possibility. This is just for the portion in between 1630 or 1730 and 1634. What is the park? And why that's important to note is the contemplation, the CMP was actually the extent from Fanshawe all the way to the Museum of Archaeology. So this is actually not the entirety of that portion. My hope is that our staff come back with their review, that this portion of the park is left as open space so that the neighborhood, the community can enjoy it. It continues to be activated for things like outdoor movies, which we've done in the past, the way the museum activates it. I've been to many activations where the museum has used it, and that the community has a chance to enjoy this open space, and that this motion actually helps to settle out this issue for that community. And that's my hope today. I understand the perspectives of the ward counselor. I, again, have had extensive conversation with the neighborhood and have been in the area a considerable amount of times and feel that this is the best way forward.
Deputy Mayor Lewis.
Counselor Ramon put that very eloquently, Chair, and I'm going to try and not repeat everything that she said there. I am absolutely going to support this motion. I supported the main motion, or the original main motion at planning, and I supported the amendments today. I'm going to continue to do that. I'm going to come back to a couple of points I've made. And I want to be clear, because there's been some interuse of the language, parks and ESA. And right now, what we have is land that's part of an ESA trail system. It's not actually a park at the moment. The City of London, in a prior iteration, chose to close the park. So for me, there's a difference. And we've heard the neighbors say they actually want their park back, and Part C allows for that to be a consideration. And Part C also allows for there to potentially be, as Counselor Ramon mentioned, accessible pathways in that stable, firm, small area of park that the community may enjoy. I know when I was out there, I talked to the community about, is there anything that they'd be interested in seeing to activate that space? And they said they like it passive, but some benches, stuff like that would be, you know, okay, a place for people to sit and read, that kind of thing. But we haven't actually rezoned it as park. So we can't talk about it as park. What we have to look at right now is the component of a trail system in part of the Medway Valley, a small part. And if we go north of Fanshawe Park Road, I want to confirm through you, Chair, to staff, not entirely, but north of Fanshawe Park Road, the trail system through that section is, in fact, accessible, meets accessibility standards, with the exception, I know there's one section that's not accessible, but there are accessible trails north of Fanshawe Park Road. Am I correct?
Go ahead.
Through the chair, yes, the majority of that section is accessible.
So just like everything else, Chair, no one gets to have everything in their neighborhood that's convenient to them. I'm lucky enough to be across the road from a community center. It's great. It's convenient for me. But there are a number of people who drive, in fact, I've had Counselor Ramon's residents drive to my community center to play pickleball. That's a significant drive for them, but they come because they want to enjoy that space there. And it may be necessary for folks with accessibility challenges to go to the north section and utilize the trails there. But there are not zero options. And we are not actually required to put in trails anywhere. That's a decision for us. We heard earlier from our deputy city manager that there's not a whole lot of options, given the pinch points there, from an engineering perspective. Anyone who's actually physically walked it can see with their own eyes that the challenges would be significant. When we talk about slope and erosion mitigation, we're talking about altering and having an impact on ESA's to put that sort of slope erosion in. I doubt very much that that would meet a low impact on an ESA. That hasn't been looked at yet, but we heard at PACC that there'd have to be feasibility studies done. And we know, we've seen the reports that come through our various committees, that consultants come with a cost. So I'm not prepared to spend more money on feasibility studies when I've gone out in the ground myself and seen that, listen, there's no problem an engineer can't solve, given given enough time and enough money. But we have neither unlimited time nor unlimited budgets at the city, we do have limits to these things. And so for me, from my perspective, even if we did the feasibility study, we're still not going to approve the budget for what will be a very expensive piece of work to do all the slope mitigation, assuming we could even get the permissions from upper Thames and get through the ecological second review that would need to happen once we start talking about retaining walls and those sorts of things. And so for me, this is the time to say no, we're not doing this trail section. Section C does allow for the consideration of a potential park redesignation in.
Thirty seconds.
And at that point, we may want to consider trails there, but that's where we are today. So I encourage people to support this recommendation. This is not as presented by some individuals as an assault on accessibility. I am sorry to the Accessibility Advisory Committee past chairs, in fact, that it has taken that long to get to this point, because to my view, you were kind of led down a path that we were never going to get to. And I'm sorry for those who, and I know Ms. Maddens in the gallery, who put in so much time without that information, but I think today we have to make a decision.
Your time is up.
So I'm going to finish there.
Thank you. Other speakers? Okay, what we have is the as amended motion before us, and we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries ten to five.
Put the main on the floor.
Yes.
Then you're going to put the staff administrative suggested.
Well, I'll put that amendment on the floor.
Amendment, I need a second or for the amendment, Counsel Hillier. We can have that up on the screen, and then I'll look for any discussion that colleagues might have. Okay, seeing none, we can open that for voting.
Counsel Van Meerebergen.
A vote yes.
Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
So, Mayor, did you want a break for?
No, I want you to do the as amended motion now.
Oh, okay, sorry. I'll put the as amended motion on.
And I'll look for a second or for as amended. Counsel Hillier, any discussion on the as amended motion? All right, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
Okay, now I'm just going to say, colleagues, I'm kind of in your hands. It's still going to be a while, given the length of time that we still have left, which is the number of pulled items on planning, all the bylaws. I did order food for 5:30. It would be maybe a little bit tight to take a break now and then break again then. So if we're okay to keep going, we can keep going until then. If you want to take a break now, I can entertain a motion, but I'm kind of in your hands, but I'm going to ensure that people have something to eat today because I think we could be going a while. And before we break, 5:30, we'll do a motion to go past six. So are we good to continue on? Counsel Ferreira?
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate you getting us some food at 5:30. I do want to see if I can move, or I will move a 10-minute process.
Okay, so we'll deal with that by an actual vote, and I want to just, we'll do it by hand, but keep your hands up because I'm not sure everybody will be here. Is there a second or for a 10-minute break now? Counsel Frank. Okay, 10-minute break, all those in favor? Opposed?
Motion fails.
Okay, we're going to power through then. Okay, go ahead, Chair.
Thank you, I'll put item number 14 regarding 514 to 520 South Street on the floor.
Okay, this is on the floor, this is the South Street item. I'll look for any speakers on this. Go ahead, Counsel Ferreira.
Thank you, Mayor, I made my remarks on this one, but.
Point of order.
Yes.
In Escribe, item 14 from the Planning Committee is shown as being dealt with in consent.
Yes, that's just a posting error, it was actually pulled. It's hard to undo that when the little dot is there, so.
Okay, just wanted to check, I'm okay with that, it's just in Escribe it was showing as dispensed with, so.
Yeah.
Wanted to make sure that we had that correct.
Yeah, we noted that, I didn't note it out loud, but we fixed it at the time of that, and for now, we're just, it's just hard to pull the dot off on the screen, so go ahead.
I did, we had some colleagues saying that over here as well. Just keep it short, I'm not supporting this. I did say my comments, I did reach out to the proponent, I did get some answers back on why they didn't communicate with staff, regardless of what the reasons were, you know, we have our process, and I'll just keep it at that, but I won't be supporting this, and I hope that we pull Bill 333, or I believe, yeah, 333 as well, I won't be supporting that.
Okay, that's no problem, we'll make sure that happens. Any other speakers to this? Go ahead, Counsel Trosso.
Very briefly, for the reasons that I talked about at the meeting where I was not a voting member, so I want to repeat a little bit, I will not be supporting this, and I think I'll just let my comments stand.
Okay, anyone else on this one? Okay, then we're going to open this one for voting.
Marking Counsel Frank is absent, closing the vote, motion carries twelve to two.
Go ahead, Chair.
Thank you, I'd like to move on to number 19, this is regarding 1196 Sunningdale Road West.
Okay, this one is on the floor, I'll look for speakers, Counsel Ramon, go ahead.
Thank you and through you and to my colleagues, this is going to be a bit unusual, but I'm going to ask that we defeat the committee recommendation and the reasons I want to share related to that. So at committee, we had a great discussion about making these school lands available to the school board for a three-year period of time to be able to access those before any other additional development goes on on the site, because as I heard from my residents, 175-plus letters, they preferred the option of 1196 Sunningdale Road West being used for a CF2 zone, which could be for things like a secondary school. In our package today, we have two letters, one is from Bill Tucker, and the other is a tersely worded letter from Barudy Law Professional Corporation, and it outlines that they are very close to an agreement between the two parties around potential use for this property, and that of course is all tied up with whether or not the province grants a secondary school in the area. So with the director's confidence in the process, I think it best that we not put in the motion that we had supported at PEC to allow the three years so that they can continue their negotiation, so that they continue to move forward on what we said through way of this motion is the priority, which is to support 1196 Sunningdale Road West as a school site. So I'm asking you to defeat the motion so that we can put the original recommendation, or I can move the original recommendation forward. Thank you.
Just give me one sec. Just so colleagues are aware of what I'm doing, we had original bylaws at committee, so if we defeat this and we bring back the original committee motion, I'm just making sure that we have those available to be able to pass tonight. If we don't, then we might. I can ask our staff, does the removal of the, I need to ask our staff if the piece that needs to be removed, which is the three-year piece, was it embedded in the bylaw or not? In other words, did the bylaw change between committee and here? Because I'm determining whether or not I can deal with this today, or whether or not I have to refer it back to committee. Mr. Maythers?
Through the chair, so removing that language from the resolution won't make any, won't require any alterations to the bylaw, so you can feel free to move forward with the bylaw, it was just direction to the approval authority, it was part of that motion.
So to Counsel Ramon's point, I'm just trying to do this for efficiency, do we just need to defeat E then, rather than defeat the whole motion? Because if the bylaws are the same, all the other components are the same, E is the request to the subdivision approval authority to consider the reserve for three years clause. I just need to confirm that if that part comes out, that it's kind of back to the, essentially, the original committee motion?
Through the chair, yes, if you remove that E portion, you'll have the result that has been requested.
So rather than, I know Counsel Ramon just spoke to defeating the motion, but I just, so you know, I can call E separate, and if E gets defeated, then there would be no three-year piece to this, and that's probably, if people support what Counsel Ramon said, that would be the easiest path forward from a chair's perspective that wouldn't change our bylaws. So I think what Counsel Ramon meant to say with all that is defeat E, and I'll call E separate in, if you want to support what she said. Do you want, Counsel Ramon, just because of the, I had to do this, I'm going to let you, I'm not letting you speak twice, I'm going to let you just confirm that that's what you want to do, because, and I appreciate colleagues, I'm just trying to do this for meeting efficiency, so go ahead, Counsel Ramon.
Thank you, yes, so that was my intention, was to remove that part for part E, that three-year, although I know my community really wants to see this as a school and wanted to give it as much time as possible. I feel as though Thames Valley and our letter from the lawyers are saying that they're heading in that direction, and I'll take Director Tucker at his word on that. Thank you.
So again, Mr. Maythers, we're going to call E first. If E gets defeated, the rest of the clause is then approved, if there's nothing else you need to the rest of the clauses to proceed, or no changes to the bylaw, is that correct? Just, if you could just use the mic for me.
Through your worship, yes, that is correct.
And I'm willing as Chair to let E be called separately, and I'll have E called first when we deal with this, but I want speakers just to the issue generally, does anybody else want to speak? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Lewis.
I'm going to be very fast, I had an excellent conversation with Director Tucker on Friday. He expressed some of the concerns that are outlined in his letter. While I know the Counselor's intent was good in speaking for her neighborhood, when we're at risk of putting the funding from the ministry in jeopardy by putting a specific timeframe on things, I think it's wise that we don't do that, in addition to the legal concerns raised by the applicant's lawyer. So excellent conversation with Mr. Tucker, I too, take him at his word, I have no reason to doubt that he's providing any information that's not accurate to me, and I would encourage colleagues to defeat E.
Any other speakers to this motion? Okay, seeing none, we're going to call E first, so we'll put clause E on the floor, I'm going to use, the Chair's going to be putting that on the floor, and. Okay, so we're good with E, there's no more speakers, we're going to open the vote on E.
If it's okay, I'm going to vote verbally, and my vote is no.
Marking Counsel Trosso is absent, closing the vote, motion fails, zero to fourteen.
Okay, so E's defeated, Chair, you put the rest of the clauses on the floor?
Yes, I'll move the rest of the clauses.
Okay, the rest of the clauses are on the floor, as they were at committee, any discussion on that? Oh, no, we already had discussion, I'm just dividing it, so we're just going to open the vote.
Counsel Ramon votes yes.
Closing the vote, motion carries fourteen to zero.
Counsel Lehman?
Thank you, we'll put item 20 on the floor, this is regarding citywide zoning bylaw amendment to stack townhouse definition.
Okay, that's on the floor, do we have any speakers to this item? Yes, I think Counsel Trosso actually wanted it pulled, he's not here, so maybe we'll just, we'll proceed with the vote then, we'll open the vote on this. We're voting on the stacked townhouse definition that you wanted pulled, you can vote, you can record your vote.
Closing the vote, motion carries thirteen to two.
Chair Lehman?
Thank you, final item 22 regarding agricultural land offset policy.
Okay, that's on the floor, I'll look for speakers, go ahead, Counsel Frank.
Thank you, yes, and I appreciate the motion to receive at PEC to give us the opportunity to have a quick discussion on this, although I don't know how far it'll get. I am speaking in favor of the further policy, so just a point of order, would we need to defeat the just receive in order to be able to pull the actions that were included in the original letter for myself?
Your worship, if I may assist. No, I'm good. So I'm going to allow her to amend the motion, to add her pieces back in, because there was no take no action noted, I just wanted to confirm the actual, and look at the language myself, so just receiving is fine. Counsel Frank, you could amend to add, I think it was three clauses in that you had, and I would look for a second or, but I would like you to read those out because they're not actually before us on the agenda for the committee, or for the public.
Gladly. So then the motion would be to direct civic administration to prepare a report examining the feasibility of developing an agricultural offset policy, including best practices from other jurisdictions, potential approaches. other jurisdictions, potential approaches and tools for offsetting agricultural land losses on both public and private lands, and alignment of such policy within London's existing environmental and planning frameworks.
Is there a secondary for that? Okay, Counsel Hopkins will second. Okay, so we can have a discussion on this amendment. Go ahead, Counsel Frank.
Thank you. And I'll just speak to the amendment itself. So as we know, London is a growing municipality, and we face this undeniable challenge of the loss of prime agricultural land. It's happening across southwestern Ontario, it's happening in local communities across Canada, and as I've said many times, only 5% of Canada's total land base is considered prime farmland. And less than 1% is Class One, which is the very best soil we have for growing food, which London is essentially surrounded by. And much of that land is here, and once it's gone, we can't get it back. Once it's paved over, we can't remediate it and then use that soil. That soil is toast. And we're losing 319 acres a day of farmland in Ontario, which is essentially nine family farms. Agriculture is a $51 billion a year industry in Ontario, and agriculture is the largest employer in Ontario, with one in nine jobs being agricultural-based. And I know there are many farmer folk on council who probably have heard this speech at home many times. And it's clear that agricultural land is a big economic driver in our community. And the reason why I'm bringing this now is recent decisions that we've seen as removing 50 acres of farmland for emergency services, and bringing more land to the urban growth boundary, which is going to be a loss in farmland, highlight the urgency for us to develop a path forward that balances growth, but also with farmland stewardship. And I'm hopeful that we can develop some sort of policy that recognizes this, not only to address our local food security issues in the long term, and I know many folks probably think this is a provincial issue, and parts of it are, but I think in the long run, we eventually need to be thinking about our own food security within London. But it also is here to sustain our local economy. We know agribusiness is huge in London, and it's one of, you need land to be able to have agribusiness. So this policy would help us look into that, other approaches. Montreal, for example, and the Ontario Farmland Trust, they have tools like conservation easements and agricultural zoning that can preserve the farmland for future generations of farmers. And I feel like we need an opportunity to be able to look at that, given the high growth we have. It's not about stopping growth, it's about managing it responsibly and recognizing the need to feed future generations. And so I'm hopeful to have some support on this policy, because I think we need to be really focused at, you know, in the coming decades, where are we going to be able to grow our own food? And that's what I brought forward. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Other speakers to this. Go ahead, Counsel Hopkins.
Yeah, happy to support or second this motion. Counsel Frank, thank you for the numbers. You're so good at providing and educating us here. I represent Ward Nine. It is half rural, half urban. We do have prime agricultural land, and the importance of land in our community, agricultural land in our community is very strong, so really happy to support this.
Counsel McAllister, go ahead.
Thank you. Through the mayor, my first time talking today, saving the good stuff. No, I just want to thank Counsel Frank for bringing this forward. I will be supporting this, and one of the things I also just want to highlight, you said on the Middlesex London Food Policy Council, this is something that definitely comes up a lot, not just with Londoners, but with our county colleagues as well. There's a lot of concern in Middlesex in terms of losing prime agricultural land, and I think we have to look at every tool we have in our toolbox in terms of preserving what we have within the city boundaries as well. I think there's a lot of alignment in terms of not only what Middlesex, but looking at Oxford, Elgin, we have a lot of areas that feed the city, but we also have to look in as well, and the areas that we can preserve for future generations, to ensure, as Counsel Frank indicated, that we have food security front of mind as well. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Lewis?
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you, we deliberately made sure at PEC that we didn't receive and take no action, so that Counsel Frank could amend it today, so that we could have a discussion with everyone, rather than having that discussion at PEC. I will say, I will not be supporting this. I know that won't come as a surprise to Counsel Frank. We've chatted about the fact, for me, our land within the city, first of all, is the best place for development. When the county is expressing its concern about loss of farmland, it's largely because of ex-urban growth, because we haven't allowed the growth to happen within side city limits. But beyond that, while I don't dispute any of the numbers, I will also say that, you know, from a food security perspective, to quote Minister Flack, who's now our Minister of Municipal Affairs, but was previously Minister of Agriculture, we export $43 million of agricultural product outside of the country every year from Ontario. So from a food security perspective, we are overproducing for ourselves, and that's a good thing, that's a positive for business. It allows for that to continue to attract the agri-food business. But when we start getting into, you know, agricultural zoning, which we already have, but if we start talking about permanent agricultural zoning, no zoning is permanent. And I'm not interested in a study that's going to come back and say whether or not that's feasible. Zoning always has to be open to change in the future. That's why we have a planning committee, because we have zoning bylaw amendments come forward on various pieces all the time. When we start getting into land trust discussions, I know Counsel Frank's not asking for budget commitment or anything like that in this motion, but ultimately, that's where land trusts go, because you have to have money to buy land to then put into the trust. So at a time when, you know, we're trying to manage our budgets, at a time when we're trying to manage our growth within the city, look at our urban growth boundary, look at our residential and industrial needs, all of that stuff, which we need to actually really have staff focused on a lot right now, so that we can get those matters decided before the end of the year. When we look at some of the other things that are on the planning committee's deferred matters list that we're asking staff to undertake, I don't see this as something that's going to be even feasible for them to probably, and through you, Chair, I'll ask staff, but I'm not sure that they would even start it during this term of council. I think we've got a lot of work on their plate right now, and so certainly, I'd welcome staff's comment as to, you know, where they are in some of their timeline developments. So I'll stop there, so you can check with staff.
Go ahead, Mr. Maythers.
Through the chair, we do have, of course, a busy work plan, but we would take the direction of council as far as how you'd want to prioritize this item.
Go ahead.
Well, that's a very diplomatic answer from a very busy department, and again, when we start shifting priorities and moving things up, then other things that we've already set our priority get moved down. So I don't want to add to that workload right now. This may be a discussion that gets revisited sometime down the road. I just don't think now is the time to have it. I'm certainly not prepared to put budgetary considerations into a budget right now to acquire land, to preserve for agricultural land at this point. Like you said, I appreciate the discussion, I'm just not going to support it, because I don't think this is where our time and energy should be right now.
Other speakers to this. Okay, this is on the amendment then, Counsel Frank's amendment, seconded by Counsel Hopkins. Just voting on the amendment now, which would add the three pieces. So we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion fails, seven to eight.
So now we still need to vote on the motion to receive, which was what came out of committee, so Counsel Layman has it on the floor, we'll open, oh, sorry, is there other speakers to that? Okay, seeing none, then we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries, fourteen to one.
Go ahead, Chair.
Thank you. That concludes the thirteenth report of the Planning and Environment Committee.
Okay, we'll move on to the tenth report of the Strategic Policies, excuse me, Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee. Deputy Mayor Lewis, if you could present that report, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. It's always easier to say SPPC. The tenth report of the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee, I'm happy to put all four items on the floor, unless any members want anything dealt with separately. I know indication that that was the case. It was a short agenda, the hydro presentation, a referral to GWG, and the appointment of an Eldon House member.
Okay, would anybody like anything dealt with separately, or can we deal with the entire? Okay, we'll put it all together, you're moving that entire slate. Okay, that's all on the floor, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll open that report for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries, fifteen to zero.
And that concludes the fastest report of this council agenda. You know, you say that now, but SPPC sometimes is pretty much the longest one, so it's the average of the counts. All right, we're on to the next report, which is the thirteenth report of the Infrastructure and Corporate Services Committee. I'll turn it over to Chair Ramon to present that report.
Thank you. I'll look to put items one through eight excluding seven on the floor.
Okay, would anybody like anything else dealt with separately? Seven will be called separately, but is there any other item colleagues want pulled out? No? Okay, then you're going to put everything but seven on the floor? Perfect. Any discussion on everything but seven? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Lewis.
Thank you. Really quickly, thank you to staff and Ms. Chair's department in particular for the work that they put into getting us some information on the winter maintenance update. I know that people wanted to see the numbers so that they could share those with constituents. I think the numbers speak for themselves in terms of why we use the standards we use, so thanks to you and your team for the work.
Any other speakers on the slate of items that are on the floor, everything but seven? Nope, seeing none, we're going to open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries, fifteen to zero.
Thank you. I'll look to put item seven on the floor.
Item seven is on the floor. Any discussion on item seven? Seeing none, we're going to open item seven for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries, thirteen to two.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
And you would have been faster than Deputy Mayor Lewis, but he talked during your report, so slowed you down there, just so we could win. Okay, that's great, we've concluded the reports. Added reports? Counsel Layman, I'll have you just read the council closed session report. Including, and just add, including the item that we went into camera with, that wasn't on the agenda.
Okay, I'd like to report out on the fourth report of council closed session, that progress was made with respect to items 4.1, 4.2, and 4.3 as noted on the public agenda, 6.1 dash, or 1/12/CPSC, 6.1/13/PEC, and 6.1/13/ICSC. And the item that we went through on. Related to, I don't know the, I don't want on Park, and I don't apologize, I don't know the item number.
Okay, that's on the floor by Counsel Layman, who gets to continue to stand, because he's presenting that report. Any discussion on any of those, really just progress? So I don't anticipate any, we'll open that for voting. Want to do it by hand? Okay, progress is just a note, we don't even have to vote on that one. So thanks, Counsel Layman, ready to sit down.
Well, thank you for getting me to stand more.
Yeah, you're welcome. You, hey, you're the chair of planning, that's something you should get used to. Okay, that's perfect. Any deferred matters? None? Inquiries? I don't see any. Emergent motions, there were none. We're on to bylaws. Give me a second, I'll tell you how the bylaws are organized. Okay, I'm just going to, we haven't got all these loaded in, but this is the plan. I just need to know if everybody's good with it, because I don't want to make a bunch of changes later. We'll deal with the bylaws in this way. We'll deal with 314 separately, that's the childcare-related one for Counsel Van Meerebergen, that'll be first. 333, which is the South Street one, Counsel Ferrera, you think you wanted that one separately in your comments. 339, which is the stacked townhouses one that Counsel Tresso wanted separate. And then, right now, we have all the other ones together, so if someone wants something else separate, now would be the time. No, we're good? I see everybody good with everything else together? Okay, all right, just give me a second, we'll load those up, and then we can go through the, we'll go through all of those. And is there someone who's good with everything on the agenda? Deputy Mayor Lewis? Counsel Palozza? So we'll use, Deputy Mayor Lewis and Counsel Palozza for everything that we've got before us, and we'll proceed through the votes as soon as they're loaded. Okay, thanks for your patience. All of those votes have been loaded in, all three readings, so we're going to start with Bill 314, the childcare one, moved by Deputy Mayor Lewis, seconded by Counsel Palozza. We'll open first reading for voting.
Motion carries, fourteen to zero.
And now, same mover, same secondary, second reading, any discussion on second reading? Seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
With one recusal.
And third reading of the same one, same mover and secondary, it's open for voting now.
Closing the vote, motion carries, fourteen to zero with one recusal.
Great, and now we'll move on to Bill 333, which is 514 to 520 South Street. Great, and now we'll move on to Bill 333, which is 514 to 520, South Street. Deputy Mayor Lewis, seconded by Counsel Palozza. We'll open first reading for voting.
Motion carries, thirteen to two.
And second reading, same mover and secondary. Any discussion on second reading? Seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote. Motion carries, thirteen to two.
And third and final reading of this bill. We'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote. Motion carries, thirteen to two.
Okay, next, we will deal with Bill 339, which is the definition for stacked townhouses. We will use the same mover and secondary for the first reading, and we'll open first
Motion carries, thirteen to two.
Same mover and secondary for second reading. Any discussion on second reading? Seeing none, we'll open this for voting.
Motion carries, thirteen to two.
And third reading, same mover and secondary. I will open third reading for voting.
Motion carries, thirteen to two.
And now all the remaining items grouped together, same mover and secondary. We'll open first reading of all the remaining bills for voting.
Motion carries, fifteen to zero.
Second reading of those same set of bills. Look for any speakers on second reading. Seeing none, we'll open this for voting.
Motion carries, fifteen to zero.
And third and final reading of this set of bills, same mover and secondary.
Closing the vote. Motion carries, fifteen to zero.
And that gets us to the end of the meeting, so I just need a motion to adjourn. Moved by Counsel Van Meerebergen, seconded by Counsel Hopkins. We'll do that by hand, or -- yeah. You're putting in the system? Okay, we're doing it by hand. All those in favour of adjournment?
That motion carries.
Okay, thank you. We're adjourned.